There will be a public hearing and we ask that the applicant please keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal. And we ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes each unless there's a representative and they're representing an organization or group and they may have five minutes. And Mr. Shawn Alexander is our official timekeeper here. Also for appeals pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68, 030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via a statutory writ of certiorari. You advise to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the historic zoning commission. First I have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Meeting minutes are approved. So first is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask one of the staff members, are we missing some lights? It seems awfully dark up here. Thanks.
So this month we have eight items on the consent agenda, first being 1401 and 1515, Fifth Avenue North, which is application for two free standing signs. Following that, excuse me, we have 1906 Sweetbrier Avenue, construction of a new outbuilding. 3,000 Belmont Boulevard has been moved to new business. 1505 Elmwood Avenue is an application for new construction of an outbuilding, as is 751 Benton Avenue. 2116 Grantland Avenue is an application for partial demolition of an addition and construction of a new addition. 1114 North 14th Street is new construction of an addition and an outbuilding. And then 210 Mockingbird Road and 505 North 16th Street are both new construction of an outbuilding. Staff finds these items to meet their respective design guidelines and we recommend their approval.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions regarding any of the ones on the consent agenda? Okay. Anyone in the public like to take any of these off there and we discuss? Yes, if you'll just come forward and say your name and address.
Pete Horton, 726 Benton Avenue.
Okay, Pete Horton, 726 Benton. I just had a question about 751 Benton Avenue. I live across the street, I didn't know there was a new construction.
Okay. Well, we'll just take, we'll vote on these and then we'll take that off and then we can discuss them at that time.
Okay. Is there somebody here?
Unless, Robin, we should have do it a different way, but that's, that'll be the most, that'll be the right way. Okay. So we'll take that one off and we'll discuss it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, so we are taking off 751 Benton Avenue and we will discuss that first. Okay. Thank you very much. Closed public hearing. Any discussion?
Yeah, since we had a controversial case maybe last time about signage, is there anything we should know about the signage request? Is everything's complied?
It's in Germantown and it's the Wurthen lots development and one's a directional sign and one is a sign kind of announcing the lots that are there. Although it technically doesn't meet the design guidelines because the Wurthen is such a different entity in Germantown, staff found it not to the design guidelines. We can present it if you want more information, so.
I just wanted to be sure that you guys were comfortable with it or whatever.
Yeah, we're comfortable with it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Move to approve without 751 Benton Avenue.
I'm second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, the first one is 751 Benton Avenue. Also, real quick to staff, because, am I able to, is this a quorum enough for me to vote? Do I have to vote on everything since there's five of us or?
I'll let Susan take that. I'm pretty sure it's only in the benefit tie.
So we're okay with the four? Okay.
You've got to have four, is my mic on? Okay. You've got to have the concurring vote of four members of the commission for final action. So any motion that is made today will have to get four concurring votes or that motion will fail, even if there is a three to one vote, the motion fails because it doesn't get four votes. If it doesn't get four votes, you can vote and provide that fourth vote, or in the event of a two to two split, you can break the tie.
Okay. So that's just a note for everyone out there, just regarding your cases.
Do you, we only need three votes if it's a two to two split?
No, it has to always be four, but I'd have to.
Always be four votes.
Either I can, either I.
But it's two to two split and it.
It doesn't.
There's no, yeah.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, thank you. 751 Benton Avenue.
The corners of the house to remain. The side addition is appropriate in this case as the. To the midpoint of the house, which is the case here, it meets guidelines for proportion of the openings, height and scale, materials, and roof form. And there is someone here who wants to discuss it.
Okay. Any questions for Paul? Okay, thanks, Paul. David, do you want, do you want to say anything or, okay, the applicant?
Good afternoon, I'm Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. We provided design services for 751 Benton Avenue. Worked very closely with staff on this one because it was sort of positioned a little differently on the lot and I think came up with a great solution to sort of maintain all the original lines of the house. We are taking down an addition on the back, which is rather substandard, it didn't really even have a foundation underneath it, and expanding the bedroom suite.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? All right, open public hearing. Now you can come up and ask your question now.
I have no questions. There was concern about a garage on the side facing Grantland and I know that our neighborhood people were opposed to that and I was surprised to see it on the agenda, so I was just asking about that for our neighbors. And this looks fine and thank you very much. It would be good that these things could be brought to the neighborhood ahead of time and would have saved a few moments. We'd like very much to welcome the new owner.
Sir, there's no garage as part of this application.
There is not a garage?
That's correct.
Okay. So you understood that, so there is no garage as part of this application? Okay. All right, closed public hearing. Do we have a discussion or a motion?
Move we approve staff recommendation.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, 751 Benton is approved. The first of the new business is 2010 18th Avenue North. Oh, nope, I'm sorry.
3,000 Belmont, sir.
3,000 Belmont, okay.
This application is for new construction of an addition and outbuilding. The new construction, both the addition and the garage, are highlighted on this site plan here. One condition where the addition meets the house on its right side, the inset is currently drawn at only one foot six inches, staff recommends as a condition of approval that the addition meet the full requirement of two feet according to design guidelines. The height and scale of the new construction are consistent with recent construction approved by the commission. The project meets design guidelines for roof form, proportion and rhythm of openings. Some details are lacking on materials. Staff requests that lap siding have a maximum reveal of five inches, that four inch wood casings be used around doors, windows, and vents. Staff also requests approval of final window and door selections, materials for the outbuilding stairs, roof color, and a masonry sample. With these conditions, staff finds that this project meets the design guidelines.
Okay. Any questions for Paul?
I have one. Paul, can we see the plan of you again, please?
Sure.
Never mind, I just answered my own question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Paul? All right, thank you. Open public hearing. Well, actually, I'm sorry, the applicant should come first. I'm sorry, jumped ahead of myself. Say your, your name and address.
Hello, my name is Troy Vergis. My address is 3,000 Belmont Boulevard. I'm the homeowner. Been working with Darden Architecture and the commission on our planning for this project. We started working with the commission, beginning with the site plan and where to put everything and scale and scope of the project. Feel like we've really kind of nailed those parameters. Gone to my neighbors, my adjacent neighbors, and kind of presented these plans to them and gotten their take on things. I have a couple of letters from them. If the commission would like to see those. And we are just ready to break ground. We feel like we've really created a plan that's going to fit into the neighborhood well. I've lived there for 12 years, I'm looking forward to continuing to live there and being a part of the Belmont neighborhood going forward. And Steve can answer the particulars about the architecture and, you know, the particulars about the project, but so I'll turn it over to him now.
If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or else I'll just save our time, you know, to speak after we hear any objections unless.
Any questions for the architect? Okay, we'll just, if we need to, we'll just open it back up for you.
Okay.
I have a quick question. Are you okay with the staff recommendations?
Yes, we work real close with staff at being a corner lot and so we, we're trying to be very sensitive to the neighbor, to the right, and to Ferguson. So we kind of met with the historic, the staff before we even drew one line or designed one line to get the position of the garage. And so we were asked to bump the garage to the back to give Ferguson a little relief with some open space and so we kind of carried that throughout the whole design, just every time we'd meet on a new concept, we'd go and get it approved with staff. So we worked real close from the very beginning to just try to nail it up front. So if you have any question, I'd be glad.
I was mainly referring to the recommendations that are, that we have before us, lap siding.
Oh, with the lap siding, yeah, we're okay with all that. We just didn't get that detail with it. We haven't really done all the wall sections and things yet, so it's just computer hatching right now. But we don't have any problems with any of those. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, now open public hearing.
Lindsey Moffett, Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Association, and I am the guilty party that asks this be pulled. I wanted you all to have a discussion about additions to historic houses. Every time we have an addition that rises above the historic house, I get questions, well, why is that? We can see it from the street, it's peeking up over the historic structure. And my answer has always been, well, there's circumstances with the grade of the lot that requires that that be allowed. In particular, under the addition section of the guidelines, it says generally, "An addition should be situated at the rear of a building in such a way that it will not disturb either the front or side facades." Under placement, it says, "In order to assure that an addition has achieved the proper scale, the addition should generally be shorter and thinner than the existing building. Exceptions may be made when unusual constraints make these parameters unreasonable, such as an extreme grade change or atypical lot parcel shape or size. In these cases, an addition may rise above or extend wider than the existing building. However, generally, the addition should not be higher or extend wider. When an addition needs to be taller, when possible, an addition should not be taller than the historic building. However, when a taller addition is the only option, additions to a single-story structure may rise as high as four feet above the shadow line at a distance of 40 feet from the front edge." So we have situations in the neighborhood where the lot grade is going up, the addition is really the same height as the original structure, but because of the grade change, that addition is going to be above that. On this lot, the grade change is actually the reverse. It, that actually drops down and I'm not sure how much it is, but it looks to me at least two feet, if not three feet, there is a grade change, a negative grade change. So I don't really understand, can you pull up the side view of the house, please? If you look from Ferguson, that's a pretty big massing on Ferguson and when you come down Belmont Boulevard, it's very visible. I was there this morning, it's very visible from Belmont Boulevard as well as from Ferguson. It's taller than the original one and a half story structure, so I'd like some discussion on that, please.
Thought he was coming up. Well, I tell you first, maybe Paul, if you've reviewed it, was there any, maybe, maybe we get some of your staff about that first and then, you can come on up, Steve, but go ahead, if you want to talk about just the point that she brought up about why this one was.
I reviewed this, we reviewed it with Steve and Troy several times, went over it as a staff, and we do feel that it meets the design guidelines. One thing that we discussed with Steve was the, the location of the outbuilding and how that might impact the, the height. I think we all agree that the location eventually decided on is the, is the best option for most cases and, you know, I, beyond that, I, I feel that it's, we feel that it meets the guidelines.
So there was no discussion about the fact that, that extra height to it in the back of the addition, none of that was?
We did discuss that. There's nothing in the guidelines that say that an addition should not be seen at all. You know, obviously, parts of them can be seen and when it's a corner lot, they can be seen very well. This was such a minimal amount, I think it was two feet taller, it's just one little section in the back, it can be seen, but based on other additions that have been approved, we thought it was appropriate.
And if I could add to that, we're trying to keep the gable, you know, the, the gable piece to like a human scale and so the, the main house has a larger gable because it's a larger, it's coming from a wider footprint. So we've reduced the gable in a way where the gable doesn't read as big, so we needed that height, so we cut down the mass. Like if, if we were to bring that down, the two feet, then we'd end up with almost like two elements kind of looking the same. I mean, there's lots of different ways to design it, but, and then I was under the understanding that we could go up four feet and we thought that was, you know, that could be getting too high, so we, we definitely didn't want to see it from Belmont and we wanted to be sensitive to the street. So that was kind of us, you know, that was our attempt to break it up and really make it. And it's, there's no sidewalks, it's more of a vehicular, you know, street also, so. But there is some parking along a big concrete pad and we've kind of cut that back and put a little friend's entry and a gate and doing some planning, so that's going to cut down a lot of the heights and scale also.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now I'll, I was going to go ahead and close public hearing and get, but make sure, were there any more, anybody else that wanted to talk regarding this, speak regarding this project? Please come forward and name and address.
Joe Woolley, 2006 18th Avenue South. I'm on the steering committee of Belmont Hillsborough Neighbors. Exterior staircases, I believe, are not allowed in the BHN overlay, but I noticed there's an exterior staircase on that garage.
For detached accessory dwelling units, exterior stairwells are not allowed. This is not one of those.
That is not a staircase?
This is not a detached accessory dwelling unit.
So just to, so it's clear, I don't know if you know, that a detached accessory dwelling unit has, has living space and actual residential unit above, so I guess technically what Paul's saying is that the guidelines don't allow those, the exterior stairs for daddoos, but the guidelines don't address exterior stairs for anything else or for, for garages, attic spaces. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So is there any guarantee that that would stay as a attic space or storage space? Because the case that I'm actually here to speak on, the developer admitted that it was going to be an apartment and that's the only reason that it was stopped and it wasn't drawn on their plan, is the exterior staircase.
That would be a code issue, we don't deal with use at all.
I do know that they, they do inspect the houses, inspect these and make sure that they don't have like things in there that'll turn into one later, so I don't, you know, like Robin said, it's a code issue that we don't get into, but I do know they take, when they're inspecting the buildings, they make sure, they, they try to verify that.
So, you know, not to dismiss your concern, I think the, the point is probably a valid one that the guidelines don't really contemplate exterior stairs with the exception with, for daddoos, which seems a bit odd and I can appreciate and understand that, but I'm not sure we can say they're, you know, they're not allowed anywhere else if the guidelines aren't specific about that. Have we allowed stairs on non-daddo accessory structures before?
You have. No, it's in that policy that you might not in the future, but at this point, you have. And you haven't discussed not doing that.
Have we done it recently?
I couldn't tell you when the last one was, sorry.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any, any other public want to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion.
So to respond, I think, a little bit to both, both of these issues, but both the issue of the exterior stair and to the issue of the specific question of the representative for the neighborhood is that, and this is from, from my view of this project and projects in general, is that no individual item is treated in a vacuum and I think particularly in, in the case of this project, if it were a single story, could it have been done without a bump up? You know, I, I'm not sure, perhaps, but you could split level it and, and do many other things, but in terms of looking at this project and looking at projects as a whole, whether it has, you know, if the stair were brought interior to the garage and we didn't have as much street presence on Ferguson, suddenly you've got a wall, you know, to the neighbor at the bottom of the page that is unbroken and, and I think to take any one individual thing and have that, take it to the nth degree, or even, even specifically as written, is, is not what we're, we're about. I'm considering this project in total and the relief that's given both to the street edge and to the neighbor in, you know, a project that certainly is less intensive than others that we've reviewed and approved, I, I feel like it's, it's well done and it balances the openness, maintaining some yard, and there are some other projects that have little, if, if none of that, it doesn't make it okay or right, but I think this one in particular in balancing outdoor and indoor space, an addition that doesn't overcome the house and, and 36 feet, 37 feet back from, not the front of the house, but from the midpoint of the house is where we see a bump and, well, this house, a ridge raise might not be appropriate. Other houses, a ridge raise right at the midpoint of the house is something that is contemplated. In this particular instance, I don't view that as contradicting the guidelines when, when considered in its total and, and considered in, in the mass of the addition and everything that's going on in the site. That's my read of.
Any other discussion about, about this project?
Did you have something to add about the stairs? And I think, you know, were you to bring the stair, the stair is to the interior of the lot. It's not, you know, it's not on, on the street facade and we've, we've had considerable objection to the size of outbuildings. Again, were you to bring the stair interior to the building, it would just make the mass of it another three feet larger. I'm not sure where to draw that line really as to whether one's better or, or worse in that case and because it's minimally visible, I, I think it's the least impactful option of getting to the second floor of, of an outbuilding.
Do the guidelines speak to chimneys at all?
In what way? In terms of massing or materials or?
Maybe height or massing.
No, usually that's required by codes, the height. It may feel a little more massive because it's an exterior chimney, but you do see those historically.
Clearly, we don't count those in any kind of height calculations and comparisons, right? They're just a separate.
We have never done that, right.
I just wanted staff to maybe clarify the concern that was raised in the quoting of the, of the guidelines. I think, you know, we don't, we don't review the guidelines with every, every one of these that we review, we rely on staff to do that, but, and so in, in my mind, you know, we've approved additions that are set way back from the front that are slightly taller like this many times before. And yet, the person that spoke quoting the guidelines, were those part of our guidelines or was that the italicized kind of policy?
That's the italicized information that, that as you all know is really to try to give direction to an applicant, but as you know, every case is different, every lot's different and I, I think as Commissioner Mosley pointed out well and the applicant pointed out well, is that you can't just take these in a formulaic way, you just can't say the height can't be more than this and the width can't be more than that. It's all about the overall massing and its feel on top of that historic building. And we really thought that turning that roof line does help bring the feel of the massing down a little bit, so an additional two feet would be really pretty difficult to read from the street and that it's better to bring that feel of the massing down than to try to squash all the height down and then just increase the amount that's covering the lot.
Great, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move approval with staff recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries for 3,000 Belmont Boulevard.
All right. The MHC approved infill on this lot in April of last year.
Robin, can I make a quick clarification on the last, the applicant's gone, but on the last case, I think there was some discussion in the presentation that the plan shows one foot six setback and, and that there was, that's not included in the staff's recommendation. I mean, I know we just passed that, but I didn't, I didn't know if that, am I misreading that?
It came up in discussion, go to two feet. Did it not?
I think it did. I, maybe if we can get, what we approved is what, the recommendations that are here, but maybe make a note to staff to discuss that item specifically with the applicant and see if they'll come along for the road.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part. What was the concern?
There was a two foot, on the inset, it's dimensioned as one foot six presently in the plans and I, and I think to be consistent with policy or previously approved policy, well, it's not in the guidelines if the staff would make an effort to address that with the applicant. There's not a condition of it, but I wanted to clarify.
Oh, I apologize, I thought it was a condition. Sorry about that.
I don't see this one.
Yeah, we'll make sure. He, he, we did discuss that and he has agreed to it, so that may be why. We did discuss that and he has agreed to it, so that may be why it's not a condition. But we did discuss that.
For the record, thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate that. MHCC approved infill on this lot at 2010 18th Avenue South in April of last year. And on July 11th, staff found a second level connector between the garage and the house, which was under construction, which you can see on the left. Because it didn't meet the issued permit and staff could not approve it administratively, the applicant was requested to remove the violation, which they did, and so they'd now like to ask the commission to approve the connector. According to the design guidelines, new outbuildings should be compatible by not contrasting greatly with surrounding historic outbuildings. In the past, the commission has determined that attached garages do not contrast great, that they do contrast greatly with historic outbuildings because the only time that you saw attached garages is when they were at the rear of a home and located at the basement level. In this case, the connection is at the second level and will be highly visible because of the lot being a corner lot. A similar connector was requested in the neighborhood and disapproved. That's the one that you see at the bottom. Staff recommends disapproval, finding that the connector creates a condition that is atypical of historic outbuildings in the district and therefore does not meet Section 2B1. And I'm sure the applicant's here if you have any questions.
You may have said this, Robin, but it looks really familiar. When this came the first time, did it have the connector?
No, it did not.
Okay.
But the one at the bottom, the one at the bottom is a case where you disallowed it, so that's, that looks wrong.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
This is the one.
Yes.
Trying to think how these match. Okay. Thank you, Robin. Any more questions for Robin? Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak regarding this project? Okay, applicant's not here. Okay, open public hearing. Anyone that'd like to speak regarding this project, come forward and say your name and address.
Hi there. My name's Joe Woolley. I live at 2006 18th Avenue South. I am two doors down from this property on the north side, same side of the street. As I've mentioned earlier, I'm also on the steering committee of BHN, but I'm not here to speak as a member of BHN, just as a concerned neighbor and a concerned citizen for the future of development in Nashville. And this house kind of hits that point. I'm actually glad that the developer has asked for yet another change to the plans of this new development as it allows neighbors to come back to this commission, which we only had one chance to speak to, and a plan was approved that has not been followed. I know I have two minutes, but, and I'll read as fast as I can, but I hope you'll allow because I think this offers a good learning opportunity for this commission and for development in general. Over a year and a half ago, in March of 2013, this case was heard. I gave Robin a packet that she said she would deliver to you with my husband's letter, presentation that he gave to you, the neighbor across the street. She has also written a letter because she couldn't be here today. Two other neighbors that came that day aren't able to be here, but there are other neighbors that are here to speak to that. This is the only time since a year and a half ago that we've been able to air our grievances, talk to somebody about this project besides the historic staff. We have never met with the developer. It was, when the house was started, it was said that there was owners that wanted to live there and that that's who we would be working with. If you've read the letters, it gives good background to what was addressed that day, and then Kristen's letter gives a good wrap-up of where we are a year and a half later. There were several issues addressed that were changed that day in the presentation and that plan, and we moved forward. But it was, you know, in that meeting, going back to the.
Time's up.
May I have more time too?
That's fine, that's fine. How about just make it two more minutes, is that okay?
All right. In short, the plan that was approved that you guys gave us, that we were here, we had a bargaining chip. We were, it was for an expanded property, 27, 25 feet to 27 feet on the house because it's a 40-foot lot. That was the only thing that we could really hold them on. But they agreed to certain things that the, to the neighbors, a sidewalk, all of this other stuff. The plan that was approved has not been followed. There's been a second dormer added to the other side of the garage that was a major change to the plan that I feel should have come back to this commission. Multiple changes to the house, the height. The house is six feet taller than was drawn in that plan. That's still that plan. It's six feet taller than that. And the garage, which was supposed to be 26 feet, is 29 feet because, and it all comes down to scale and the topography that was used on the plan. I've spoken to past commission members, and I guess this is an ongoing problem. I would hope that you guys can address that in the future because it really does impact the size of a house. For today, them being allowed, it was built and it is built with the supports the way it was drawn. Tim with Historic told them any other major changes, we would have to come back in front of this commission, which I said I was fine with. They disregarded that as they've disregarded several of the things that Historic has put down in front of them. They put up, you know, worked through a stop work order when they built it higher than it was supposed to be. It all comes down to a developer who lied about not being a developer and this was going to be a local homeowner. They've been dishonest the whole time. They're being dishonest now. There's pictures that I brought you that show where the support is. They're saying that it can't be built like that. It already is built. There's no need to connect it. It makes the house even more massive than it already is. But I just hope that you guys will take a look at this case in regards to future development, new development, especially in historic areas. Our friend John Brittle is the developer. He's on the cover of The Ledger with this house in the background, talking about how great development is.
Okay, probably have to cut it, I probably need to cut it there, but thank you very much. I appreciate, are you about to spit out something or?
You guys are very important and you are the only input that the neighbors have. I hope you, you know, please do take a look at this. I'll submit my letter to Robin and I hope she can get it to you because it points out all the different things. But I think it goes to show how important you all are in the future development of Nashville.
Thanks for your concern.
Hi, I'm Kristen Crowver. I'm at 2008 18th Avenue South. So I'm the neighbor that gets to deal with this directly next door. When I purchased the home, they just started framing, and so I didn't really know the scope of the project. Since that day, I've been cussed out by the developer. They built their entire house on my water main. They refused to pay me for that water. They had a ditch dug in my yard from my water main to their house for four months that they refused to fill in. I have talked to them about moving the air conditioning units to the street side, which they had agreed to do, which they ended up not doing. I've dealt with pretty much anything you can imagine. I've had to move stakes back off of my property line. It's just every step of the way, it's been really difficult. So to approve this, I mean, I already feel like this house is kind of lording over my house. And the deck that you're looking at to connect it, I mean, it just feels like it's going to be right on top of my backyard. And like Joe said, the way that they have it now, there's no problem with it. The supports are fine and they're not in their hot tub that they're trying to build in as they state that they are. And so that's all I really have to say about it, but just, you know, granting these guys any more permission, I think will really cause more of a stir in the neighborhood that we're kind of trying to get over and we're ready to move on and have some great neighbors move in and be done with this little chapter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep, you can come forward, just. Okay, we'll make sure they get close to the mic when it's time. Okay, anyone else like to speak regarding the project? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion.
Robin, can you speak to the, to the point the gentleman made about it being six feet taller than the plans? Have we measured it?
I know that there's been a lot of changes. I can't speak to all of that. Tim Walker has been dealing with that, and I apologize, I don't remember every detail. I know that we've been out there many, many, many times, and there've been many changes and some have been approved and some have not, and I don't have all of that information with me.
But is it fair to say that if somebody increased, sorry, if someone increased the height by six feet, that would need to come back and wouldn't be something you would administratively approve?
I can't say 100% every single time, but.
It seems like a big change.
I don't have that file with me here.
I think it's important to Commissioner to understand what we're being asked to approve. I mean, it's, you know, and I think there's proper channels for grievances, for filing complaints, for if they didn't follow the plans, if they didn't follow what was approved. You know, obviously if there's concerns from the neighborhood about accurately depicting heights in the application relative to what's there on site, you know, hopefully the staff can continue to monitor that as well as you can to make sure what we're approving here is accurate. Understand there's complaints about the builder or developer, but it's really not our job to deal with those. So just a reminder that we're here to approve or disapprove what they've requested here.
I agree completely. I just, the reason I ask the question is because we delegate certain, certain things to staff to approve administratively, and something like that sounds like it would exceed the scope of anything we've ever delegated. So I'd wanted to clarify, we don't have the information, but I think it's worth just understanding what that scope is if, because it was truly surprising.
No, and I don't disagree. I mean, for us to understand when the staff's making a decision to make an administrative approval on an alteration is really important. Doesn't necessarily weigh into our decision, necessarily weigh into our decision on this, but I appreciate the question.
Any comments about the connection?
I have a question on, I'm not sure, my memory's maybe not good. I don't remember seeing this, being present for this one being reviewed, maybe I was, check the record, but was the deck shown on the original application? Was a deck?
A deck was, yes, but it was not, it did not run all the way to the garage.
And is the A100 that's included in the information, the original submission or maybe more importantly, the approved submission?
Not completely, no. There's been changes.
Well, what was presented and then approved at the commission meeting?
The drawings they gave you don't show some of the changes that are not related to this.
Right, well, in other words, we approved initially a deck off the bonus room of some dimension 12 feet 8 inches wide by an undimensioned depth.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion or a motion?
I think we had considerable discussion about this on a previous case, and without repeating all that here, I think that that still remains, which is these, this is perhaps an even smaller lot and he's meandering, it's a corner lot that doesn't, that has some alley out access and it's narrower. All those things apply in this case, and this house suddenly starts to, you know, locomotive style fill the whole block with that connection, which we typically have not done, so that's my discussion. That being said, I move for disapproval of the application to connect the rear upper level deck to the garage at 210 18th Avenue South. 2010 18th Avenue South.
Have a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, 2010 18 is recommended for disapproval. Okay, 1700 Primrose.
Hi. Some of you may recall for 1700 Primrose Avenue that you reviewed an application there last month. Just to refresh very briefly, it's a historic house that was converted to a duplex with a rear addition in the 1960s. And last month, the commission approved an application to partially demolish that rear addition and construct a new one. The new addition would continue to serve as a second unit of the duplex which the original, or existing addition did. That, that's the existing footprint there. The addition that was approved last month would be wider on the left side and then extend to the right with a stoop facing Oakland Avenue. Although the addition is wider, as I said, it matches the height of the historic house and staff found that it met all of the design guidelines and the commission agreed and approved. This current proposal is a revision, very similar to the design that was approved last month, and staff reviewed it, found that it still meets the guidelines for height, setbacks in rhythm of spacing, roof materials with some standard conditions on the approval of windows and doors. But whereas the previous month's approval had a stoop facing Oakland Avenue, the revision has an increased porch that now reads much like a prominent front porch, projecting as much as 10 feet from the face of the building. Staff found that the scale is not appropriate as it's not subordinate to the house, the original house, and that it inappropriately alters the orientation, shifting it from Primrose to Oakland. And staff recommends disapproval of the current proposal as it does not meet Section 2BF, as it appears to give the home two different orientations, and because it does not meet Section 2B2A, as a side porch is not an appropriate scale for an addition.
The applicant is here, I'm sure he'll want to address you as well. Thanks, Sean. Any questions right now for staff?
Let me sure I understand this, Sean. Is there a brand new plan submitted or just the side porch?
There is a full set of plans in your packet. The, I just showed here the Oakland Avenue elevation and the floor plan. I can kind of flip back and see that the footprint is pretty similar, but that.
Are you recommending disapproval of the porch or the brand new plans?
The previous approval would still stand. It would just be for the revision that has a prominent front porch shifting the orientation from Primrose to Oakland.
Yes, we're recommending disapproval of these plans.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak regarding this project?
Speak. Here, can you hear me now? My name is Van Pond. I'm the architect for this proposed addition. We actually came to the meeting last month and were pleased generally with what the commission told us, especially in the discussion had during the meeting about this particular lot being a different condition than a addition to a mid-block house, in that it is a corner lot, it has two separate orientations. That is actually something that was brought up by the commissioners themselves about this might be a place where having the house, having these look almost like two houses would be more appropriate. When we initially spoke with staff on the first submission, this is the plan that we submitted for their consideration. We were told, as they have given you in their motion to disapprove, that a secondary porch was not an acceptable solution to this. However, we would like for your consideration on this, as we've, as per last month's meeting was discussed, maybe a secondary orientation is appropriate in this particular condition as this does address Oakland Avenue, and there are houses in pattern on this street. Facing it is its unbroken block that have front porches. That's really why we're here. One of the things you'll notice about this plan versus the last plan, and this is in your packet, hopefully you have the same one that I do, on page, let's see, page five, you'll see the comparison plans. This plan actually allows us to pull the mass of the solid building back further from the setback line than was previously proposed. Having an open front porch dematerializes that to the street and also addresses the street as a side porch would. One of the things in the guidelines that's stated, and this is in your packet as well, on page three, side porches or porch chairs may also be appropriate as a secondary entrance, but the primary entrance should address the front. We have a situation here where we probably have two houses with two entrances. One of the things we did do with this plan was we took away, there is not a front facing or Oakland Street facing front door on this addition. It is tucked around the corner off the porch, so it is not obviously a front door. We'd like for you to give some consideration on this. We feel like this is actually a better plan for both the neighborhood and for the house itself. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
We might have other questions later for you. Open public hearing. We might speak regarding this project.
Lindsay Moffett, Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Association. Duplexes are tough, and it's, we're certainly struggling with it in our neighborhood. However, we have talked about duplexes on a corner lot, and if you've gone to the site and looked at it, Van has done a tremendous job in keeping this minimal massing. We have no objection to the front porch that he wants to add on this. I think having an entrance on Oakland makes sense when you look at the site, and you look at the separation of the other homes that address Oakland. We really don't see that much difference in the original submission. As he said, it doesn't read like a front door, it just reads as a side porch, yet it does have an orientation toward Oakland, which the person who would live in that house would probably like. So we have no objection to his submission.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion or questions?
Just have a question. The architect pointed out that this plan was actually, I think if I understood correctly, Van, this plan was the first plan that was submitted
For discussion.
For discussion with staff. Staff had indicated, probably based on previous actions of this commission, which aren't necessarily always consistent, I understand, and are easy to interpret, and thus, because the conversation for the approval last time has come back with the original plan for consideration by the commission, and I assume the staff's, nothing's changed from your original opinion on this being inappropriate, based on the guidelines and past actions of the commission. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, and I know you, it's hard to keep track of all the past actions of this commission, but I suspect, have we been consistent on this issue? Because I know we've, and it's probably changed over time perhaps, but I know we did have conversation about this being appropriate as really feeling like two, two separate homes. There's a big setback in the gap between the two. Having an entrance, a porch similar to the rest of the neighborhood seems appropriate in that case, but I guess, Robin specifically, have we said, you know, no, this is not something that we think is appropriate in the past?
In the past? That's what's been said. Of course, things have been a lot different this year, and the last two years, really. It was our understanding that the commission did not want an addition to look like a separate home, a home attached to a home. We heard both discussions last time, so we stuck with the design guidelines and previous decisions, but there's no doubt Mr. Pond has done this very, very well, but I think we also kind of have to think about what's the next submission that may not be as artfully done, and that the direction from you was to keep those side entrances secondary, and that orientation to the primary street.
So I fully understand and appreciate where the staff's coming from with their recommendation. I think, given that in the, it's been rare, it sounds like, or not, not often in the past have we considered an addition to appear as a second home to be appropriate, but last month, we voted that in this particular case, perhaps it is. And so I would argue that, while I certainly understand where the staff's coming from, given our past decisions, that because this appears as a second, almost as two single-family homes, that a well-designed, well-crafted, front, you know, street-facing, primary porch would be appropriate, and with no objection from the neighborhood, it seems, seems appropriate.
Go ahead, Ben.
Aaron, I don't want to put all this on you, but there was, if I recall from last month, there was some specific discussion about perhaps tying this, not identical, and maybe not even similar, but tying this project to a previous discussion we had had in a case maybe from two months ago, that was, you know, two houses on a single lot, and there was quite a bit of hem and haun, and checking with legal about what, you know, second entrances and those kinds of things, and I, I am curious to, I think there are probably as many solutions. If you can accept our reasoning or logic that this is appropriately scaled, and that a second house on this lot is appropriate, there are probably as many ways or as many reads you could have on either of these as defensible positions for which is better, or maybe not even better, but which is most fitting, or more fitting. I think there, I see certainly convincing arguments in both, and I'm struggling with which is, which is the more appropriate to do, but I certainly would be interested in the vein of that previous conversation, or if you have no concern about that at all. I think on the, because of its existing, the existing context, it certainly feels like, albeit not designed as such, it feels like that, you know, the two on, some of the two-on-one previous submissions, we've seen in other districts.
Yeah, I, we had a long discussion, and I think Hunter's right, and on, I'm a little conflicted on it too, because I think it's a slippery slope when you start, especially as you get to smaller lots, start cramming a house, and when it projects as two houses, because that's something we've clearly disapproved in the past, most recently, a couple of years ago, in the context of umbilical duplexes, and that's not exactly what's happening here. I don't, I don't have really a problem with, at all with what they want to change, but I think it's important to just distinguish that this particular lot is, has some unique aspects that are probably not going to be present in a lot of other situations, as well as the fact that it's been done really well, and that helps to pull it off, but it's really the fact that it's on a corner, and it's an unusually shaped lot, there's a lot of extra depth in the rear, as it relates to going back up toward, in the direction of Primrose from Oakland. If you were trying to do this on a 50-foot lot, I don't know how it would work so well, but given what we approved last month, I don't know why this is a whole lot different to me.
I'm not...
I think just going back to relying on the same reasons we thought the other one was okay last month, none of those reasons, for me, have changed.
I don't, I'm having a hard time developing an affinity for one over the other, yes or no, on this one, but I think, so accepting that, in looking at the, to me, which is better, or maybe which is permissible, maybe that's a better way to look at it, but the grade and the number of steps in, if you accept the fact that two is okay here, because of all the things we've stated previously, we don't need to recover that ground, do we want to have it be more or less identifiable as an addition, and more identifiable as, this is two homes on a single lot, because I, I mean, it's kind of the elephant in the room here, in that it either is or it isn't, and the more, the more we lean in one way or the other, that might be a guiding principle to say one of these is better at doing that than the other. I don't know that it is, but I'm going to make an argument that if you, if you look at the side porch that's on Primrose in the photograph on page six, it's elevated by eight or so steps, and then this addition, which is a second unit, sits only three or four steps. So I think that from the street, that'll definitely look like two different things, so that already goes towards
Yeah.
This being two.
And if we're already walking down that road, the latter plan, it, I think the simple orientation of the steps in the July plan takes away from this looking like its own facade, rather than the orientation on this revised plan we're seeing right here today.
I would, I would almost argue the contrary, in that I think the July plan, because the mass steps out further to the contextual setback, makes it look more like a second thing, and it separates that entrance from the rest of it. Now, tying that back to the guidelines, you know, there's not anything in the guidelines that would say one's okay and the other is not, but, and we don't need to have an esoteric design discussion for the next 30 minutes on this one, but is there anything to that argument, or if we're accepting that the second one is okay, and that we have taken in the second plan, the existing line that's established by the house, and one thing this does do is the mass of the house, not the porch, continues that line, and then it bumps out further as it gets closer to the alley, where the other is the opposite orientation of that. Granted, it has less of a front porch, and may be less desirable to sit out on and activate Oakland Avenue for the, for the end user, but that would be, in my mind, those are the distinctions in the massing, once, now that we've already gone down that road of the second unit, that, to me, is a reason to decide one, potentially a reason to decide one way or the other.
I think it's, it's not so much an either-or, or if one is better or more compliant with the guidelines than the other. To me, it's, if you've got an ordinary-sized lot, whether it's in line or on the corner, if it's one of the 50, 60-foot-wide lots, it should read as one structure, or it will look unusual, whereas here, we have all these other unique aspects that allow it to sit back a little further, we have the slope, we have the extra depth in the rear, there's a bunch of things that come together, and then I think, once you sort of hit that light switch, you can do it either way, and it would meet the guidelines. It's just, once you have those extra conditions in place, site conditions, the applicant has a couple of things to choose from that they don't have on an ordinary lot. That's sort of where I get at it.
In other words, both being acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
Very well.
Any more discussion about that?
I'll make a motion, and if, I think Aaron put it well there, but for clarity purposes, I think for the staff, and I'd love to hear if the staff feels like this doesn't meet the objective of the guidelines, but what we're essentially saying is that, you know, in some cases, some unique cases, an addition that appears to be a second home may be appropriate. And in those cases, it may also be appropriate to treat each as such, with what may appear as primary entrances on each structure. Is that, is that...
Yeah, except I just thought of one thing that may, we may need to add to the analysis. If we're going that way, once you flip the light switch over to an area where, okay, it's fine for homes to be oriented in different directions and project as two homes on a lot, does the one in the rear, or the one oriented towards the secondary street, need to somehow now be subordinate, like we're looking at it in some of those, you know, you turn the corner on a block?
Well, it's a good discussion. I'm not sure if it's a, probably a separate discussion, because we've already approved this massing.
We've already approved, exactly, yeah, so it's, it's maybe a factor when you think about it.
But it's a good point, that additions should be subordinate.
I think
If considered as, you know, being designed to, and appropriately so, in this case, to be two sep, two homes, then does it necessarily need to be?
And I think we may, or we wouldn't be inconsistent by requiring that in the future, because here, like Ben pointed out, you have eight or nine steps on the front, the lot slopes to the rear, you have less steps. It probably looks that way when you're standing on the street, whether they are in fact the same level or not.
I think, shouldn't go unnoticed, in the specific discussion, that if you look at the front of the house, it's at 1700, the original front of the house, you know, the stairs very easily, and maybe could, should, I mean, that was kind of a toss of the coin, they just happened to come down on the Oakland side, and that has something to do with what feels like front-side, you know, and that if they went the other way, this would be a, it is a primary entrance to a second unit, I mean, that's, that's what it is. So I think it's in, because of that, and all the things we went over last month, that this is not as subordinate as might be appropriate according to the guidelines and other, in other circumstances, that here, that's less applicable, or maybe this is acceptable, having something that's more primary facing the street is worse.
Looking at it in the totality, as you talked about. Well, can we get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the application as submitted, and just for clarification, I would like to ask the staff, maybe after there's a second, if there's a second.
If you, are you done?
I just want to ask the staff if there were any other concerns with these plans, because...
Okay, that's a good point. I'll go ahead and get a second.
I don't...
Okay. Now, through the discussion, if you want to, is there any, did you have any other issues with the plans other than the porch?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure, because this is not what's laid out in the staff recommendation, we want to be sure that the motion's pulled back to the design guidelines. And would it be appropriate just to take, Commissioner, what you said earlier as part of the motion, about the lot being, or I believe it was Commissioner Kalber, about the, being appropriate because of the lot size and the ability to sit back further on the lot?
Corner lot, also, in fact, it's a corner lot.
Yeah, man, I don't know if that has to be in the motion. I mean, that, the analysis is in the record, and...
Typically, when you...
The staff would certainly appreciate it if it were.
Well, no, but typically...
They recommended disapproval.
So typically, when you make a motion, it's just enough to say you approve it, because everything's backed up in the staff recommendation, but if it's different than the staff recommendation, we just want to be sure that the design guidelines are called out in the motion, just in case.
Do you want us to restate that, or just make a record, just of what those bullets are? Do you want us to restate the motion, or?
If it please the Chair. I think there's been a motion, and there's been a second, and there's been a vote, right? So you would have to rescind the motion before another motion could be made. You would have to rescind, rescind your prior action of the board, and then open it up for another movement.
So Ms. Jones, it's, it will be recorded in the minutes, the discussion that we had? So is that not enough to support the motion as approved?
Yeah, it could be, yeah. I mean, it would depend on what a court would look at, from my perspective, but I think from staff's perspective, they're looking at, not necessarily from what a court would look at, but what is informational for them to know how to, how to advise persons, but from my perspective, from a legal perspective, yes, we would look through the discussion that you've already had on the record to support it. The only time that you have to legally draw it back to the guidelines per statute is if it is a denial, and in that instance, we would have to tie it directly back to the guidelines, because the statutory authority for this board says that you have to do it that way.
Okay.
Hunter, the one thing we didn't discuss, which has come up before, and staff added the alternative, if you do approve, please consider these, you know, the stuff about approving roof colors, materials, the HVAC behind the midpoint, all that stuff that we take for granted that they put.
Okay, well, since, why don't we just go ahead? We'll make a motion to rescind it, then. Do I have a motion?
I'll move, I rescind the motion or the vote.
The last action.
The last action, in a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So who wants to take a shot at?
Well, Aaron's question is a good one. Were there conditions on the previous application that would still apply here, or do they need to be added to this?
There were, and I don't have that recommendation with me, but there were the standard conditions on, as you said, the roof color, approval of windows and materials.
So we could say as approved last month?
With the conditions of the previous approval.
Hunter, I think in, going back to the guidelines, if you'll permit me to
Sure.
Maybe look at this in a different way, because I think the disapproval specifically refers to 2BF, and 2BF reads, "The orientation of new buildings' front facade shall be visually consistent with surrounding historic buildings." consistent with surrounding historic buildings." You know, I think, in my mind, some of this goes back to the fact that this, while it's an addition, it's a second unit on the lot. I mean, that's what it is. It was presented as such, the applicant was very clear that that's what it is, and we have two-family, we have duplexes, historic duplexes in these neighborhoods, and I think the orientation of this building for a home that fronted Oakland would be on Oakland Avenue and that this porch fronts the primary street. It would be for a new building, if you read the italicized text, "New building should incorporate at least one front-street-related porch that's accessible from the front street." It does that, does it not?
It does.
And so I think it would depend on how you're looking at this, based on our discussion from last time, that I believe maybe there's a difference of interpretation of 2BF specifically in this case.
Yeah, I concur with Ben. I think if the entrance was to the left and on the side of the building, if that was the actual front, then it would, I think our discussion would be a little bit more difficult, but given the existing orientation of the entrance, I think that's a very good point.
Can someone sum up all that in one motion?
Do you want to roll with that, Ben?
I move for approval of the application of the revised side entrance, actually, I think the revised entrance and porch proposal on the application at 1700 Primrose Avenue, citing that, you know, in the discussion, which is on the record and also in the reading of 2BF orientation, that the new building's front facade is consistent with not only the Primrose side of the existing residents, but other examples in historic districts of two-family units, and that a porch fronting the primary street, which in the case of this unit is Oakland Avenue, with an entrance, side entrance is appropriate.
Second?
And I think that, I'll say with the conditions that were approved last month, but I would think that those would, because what we approved last month is part of this application, that would apply, but with the conditions from last month.
Okay. Before, so is that staff, is that good?
Thank you.
Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, 1700 Primrose is approved. 2107, okay, and 2115 White Avenue.
2107 to 2115 White Avenue is an application for a cottage development on three lots. Currently on the lots are three 1970s non-contributing structures. Their demolition meets the design guidelines. The application is for a cottage development consisting of eight detached, single-family units on three former lots. The planning commission approved a specific plan, or SP, for this site in the spring. The SP allows for the eight detached residential units, but states that the Metro Historic Zoning Commission must approve the architectural plans before the final site plan for the SP is approved. The three front units were all appropriately addressed White Avenue, with front porches and entries facing white and walkways leading from White Avenue to the porches. The three units will keep the rhythm of spacing along White Avenue. They will be set back from the front property line by about 40 feet. Staff asks that, we confirm in the field when they're doing the setbacks, that the three front setbacks match the historic house just to the north at 2105 White Avenue. Units four through eight are situated behind units one through three. They will be centered around a courtyard so their entries all face the courtyard. The rear walls of four, units four, five, seven, and eight extend beyond the sidewalls of units one through three by approximately one foot. Staff asks that the rear walls of these units extend no further than the sidewalls of the units facing White Avenue. So in other words, we want the units behind units one, two, and three to be completely tucked in behind those units. The parking for the development will be located at the rear of the property, accessed via the alley, which is appropriate. Twelve uncovered parking spaces will be provided. Unit six, which is located at the rear of the site, will have a single bay attached garage facing the alley. Typically, attached garages are only appropriate if they are located at the rear and at the basement level. This garage is not at the basement level, but staff finds it to be appropriate because the unit is located at the rear of the property where an outbuilding would typically be located. In this situation, having another parking space inside the house helps maximize the green space for the development. The front of the property features three rain gardens. The rain gardens are located between the sidewalk and the three front units. The rain gardens will have two-feet-tall knee walls. Staff asks that these rain gardens be relocated to the interior of the project where they will have less of an impact on the historic character of the street and the district. Information on the knee walls was not provided, so we would want to review any, you know, all the details for the rain gardens. Here are the front facades for units one through three. These are the ones that face White Avenue, and they are the most visible part of the development. They are all about 34 feet wide and 27 feet deep. Their heights will be approximately 24 feet 6 inches above the foundations, and because of the grade of the site, the foundation heights do vary between one and two foot 6 inches tall. The maximum height from grade for these front units will be about 27 feet, sorry. Staff asks that unit two, which is the central unit, have porch eve overhangs to match those of the rest of the houses, or the rest of the eves on the house. The materials for all these units are similar and include wood and cement fiberboard siding, asphalt roof, brick foundation and chimneys, and pella-proline windows. Staff asks to approve all final material choices for all of the development. Here are the facades of the interior units. These units are slightly shorter in height than the front units. On average, they're about one foot shorter than the front units. Their widths and depths are similar to the front three units. In general, the window openings and placement are appropriate. We scrutinize units one through three most because those are the most visible, but we do ask that unit two, which is the central unit on the front, include a window opening kind of where the block is shown there. And kind of here are some context photos along the block of White Avenue. These are all photos on the same side of the street as the development. You can see on the bottom that there are two, two-story structures further down the block, and then here are the houses that are across the street, across White Avenue from the development. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the cottage development with several conditions. The front setback for the front units match the front setback of the house at 2105 White. All rear units sit within the shadow line of units one through three. The finished floor heights of all units be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic house at 2105 White. Units two, front porch have eve overhangs of at least one foot, and that same unit have a window placed on its side facade, as was shown on the drawings. Staff approves all final materials and the location of the HVAC units, and that any shutters that are placed on the houses be fully operable. The rain gardens be moved to the interior of the project, and staff approves all site features. Because this is a historic preservation overlay, not a conservation overlay, we do approve pretty much everything that is a permanent landscape feature. Happy to answer any questions. I believe the applicant is here to address the commission.
Okay, any questions for Melissa?
I do have a quick one for you, Melissa. It's more of a clarification on comments for items, I guess it'd be four, five, seven, and eight. They're sticking out, or they appear to stick out by a foot.
Right.
In the, in the plan, they have porches that extend to the interior of the lot. Is there, as long as we have the side setback maintained, is that staff's position, does that, are you considering the shadow line kind of a bracket between the one side of one and three and that what happens in the middle, not that it doesn't matter, but if they're going to cheat in, they need to cheat into the courtyard? I just want to make that clarification.
Yeah, well, I think if they moved it one foot, the porches would be slightly closer, but those are, you know, typically porches are up on the side, so they're less visible and less, they're still visible, but they're less of an impact. So we want, it's mainly the walls of the houses to be within the shadow line of the walls of the front units.
To the point, the staff's recommendation is not to squish the house by a foot, but to move it towards the center by a foot.
Right, I mean, if they were to shorten those houses by a foot, that would be fine as well, and that's something the commission could discuss.
Just maintain the side setback line, okay.
But because they are slightly setback, they could just shift it.
I think on, in terms of the rain garden and when the applicant gets up, I very recently ran into this as a low-intensity design aspect of this project, and with the grades being what they are, certainly we'll let the applicant speak to it, but I have a specific question about the rain gardens because I think having the water flow into the courtyard and contain, be contained there may be problematic from stormwater management standpoint and that, I'm guessing, I don't know this, but that the retaining walls are a level spreader. So in other words, it's an integral part to treating the stormwater with low-intensity design on the site, so we may have to, I guess, take a, have some more discussion and visit that with staff on this and other future projects.
And we didn't have a lot of details on the rain gardens, so the applicant can probably provide more details than I can.
Very well, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Hi, my name is Jeff Miller, the owner at 2107 through 2115 White Avenue, and the applicant of my company was Jay Miller Enterprises. And Michael from Dale and Associates is here, and Dee Bonham, who's the architect, is here. We are okay with everything except the rain gardens, and I'm going to let Michael speak on that because that was a whole process of going through stormwater and let him answer the questions on that. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Michael Garrigan with Dale and Associates. I'm a civil engineer, 516 Heather Place. I'm here quite frequently for the planning commission, as well as Board of Zoning Appeals, but it's my first time before you guys, so I appreciate the opportunity. You know, just to, again, to speak to the rain gardens, I think that's the one condition that my client had concerns with and asked me to come here today and help provide some clarity on or some explanation on. The property falls from the alley to White Avenue about eight feet in grade. The difference in elevation between the courtyard and White Avenue is about five feet. You know, I just found out about this yesterday, so I honestly hadn't had a chance to dig into it, but to say that it's impossible to get it back into the courtyard, but it would be challenging. You know, as Mr. Mosley pointed out, you know, the rain gardens are likely the highly most high-recommended low-impact or green infrastructure practice that our Low-Impact Design Manual that the Stormwater Department's recently adopted recommends to reduce the volumes of runoff, to reduce the rates of runoff, and to clean the water that does runoff, so that their intent mostly is that it's something like 85, maybe 90% of Middle Tennessee's rainfall events are 1.1 inch or less. These are designed so that that water never sees the street, never sees a pipe, doesn't make it to the river, it goes into the ground, it's absorbed by plants, or it evaporates. You know, aesthetically, the way that these would look, as Melissa pointed out, there would be a two-foot knee wall that feature-wise could blend in with the architecture, you know, however staff sees fit, and that top of that wall would be the top of the rain garden. So you would not see it from the street. What you would see is the trees and the shrubs, switch grasses and wildflowers that are within the garden itself. If you were to traverse into the site and look down on it, what you would see would look like a planter bed. It's only, it's sumped about six inches or exactly six inches. That's the depth of it. It's not a traditional hole in the wall, or hole in the ground, stormwater pond, like you might envision it. It's literally a sumped landscape bed. The bottom of it is side mulch, decorative rock. Each one would have two native trees, six native shrubs, and then a mix of brown-eyed Susans, other wildflowers, as well as switch grasses. So it's an aesthetic landscape feature, not an ugly stormwater feature, but it serves a great purpose from a stormwater standpoint. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Anything else from the applicant? Any questions for the applicant at this time?
I've got a quick one for you, and it really has to do with, I think the extents of this certainly wrap the walks and it makes, in addition to probably landscape sense or civil design sense, it makes sense in terms of defining the entry. Is the height of it part and parcel to the operation of the rain garden? In other words, is the top of the wall kind of the level spreader so that if it spills over, that's.
Yes.
In other words, you can't raise it or lower it without affecting the entire process, or certainly a significant portion of it, as I understand how this is working.
Somewhat, yes. It's all a volume thing. You play with it, the bigger they get, the less, you know, the shallower they can be, so, you know, the more you squeeze them, the deeper they can be. You know, as far as spilling over the wall, they all would have an outlet structure, but it wouldn't be a concrete box. It's a 12-inch diameter pipe that sticks up about that far out of the ground with a little grate. You don't even see it.
Probably in the center of the garden, I assume.
What's that?
In the center of the garden, I assume, just like an overflow pipe, because we don't want the water going out that wall, correct?
Right, exactly. That's exactly what it would be. And then typically, we try to hide them with the landscaping, so unless you're really looking for it, you won't see it.
I'm with you. Great, thanks.
Okay, no more questions. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? If you are against the project, if you'd come to speak first, the ones who are against it, and then we'll open up for the one, too.
My name is Betty Horton, and I live at 726 Benton, which is at the north end of the White Avenue, and it's a 1915 bungalow. And we also own a rental property across from this project. I'd like to say that there are three houses on White Avenue that are two-story. Other than that, none. So this is towering. These houses look massive. We have not seen any of the renderings. We've not been invited to see these, so this is all new to us. So it's shocking to see these huge to us. This looks huge. These are the plans that we were given at our meetings. That doesn't tell us very much. Then in January, we had a meeting with the developers, and they showed us a little cute little cottage-y type thing that we thought was okay. But the neighborhood kept saying, well, we could live with six, two on a lot. Eight doesn't feel good. So the neighborhood took a petition, did a petition on White Avenue, and only one person, one resident was in favor of it, and four weren't applicable, and everyone else said, yes, we don't approve of this. So we voted no. And we had a petition online, which was 163 people who did not want the SP zoning. At all the hearings, I've quoted the statutes, and I know it doesn't apply, but I'm going to say it anyway. "In the event of redevelopment, the historic guidelines shall prevail." Well, that doesn't happen because SP trumps everything else, which is an endangerment to historic neighborhoods. We thought we were safe for 30 years. We applied.
Your time's up, if you could wrap up.
Oh, okay. We're opposed, we think they should go back to the drawing boards because the back overtowers the front, and it's way too big from what we were shown, and we weren't invited to comment on this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Pete Horton, 726 Benton, Willden and Waverly neighborhood, recent past president. I wonder what would be the worst thing that could befall historic preservation in Nashville? That neighborhoods fail to obtain or retain their historic district status? That the Metro Council candidates promise to save money by moving historic zoning to the planning department? That the council believes SP zoning and councilmancy courtesy trump any concerns about historic preservation? Well, of course, that's already happened. That's a done deal. That one. Regarding these plans, the orientation of four buildings in the middle is not visually consistent with the neighborhood. The promise of one-and-a-half-story cottage turns out to be nearly two-story homes. The house in back looks just as dominant as those in the front. Although these designs are really fine as individual homes, when crammed together without yards, it sort of looks like a little village around a model train under a Christmas yards, it sort of looks like a little village around a model train under a Christmas tree. It's just too much. Speaking of done deals, when my wife called planning a year ago asking about this, the planner said it was a done deal. When I called the leader of another historic residential neighbor to ask how to prevent disrupting our traditional settlement patterns, she said it was a done deal. When we spoke at the council hearing, the developer joked us in the back saying, you can go home now, this is a done deal. And my worry is, how many done deals is it going to take to kill historic preservation in Nashville? Thank you very much for your usual and humane courtesies to the various speakers. We appreciate the tone of, of your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Patrick Luegel, at 2203 Grantland Avenue. I echo some of the sentiments that my neighbors have done. In all honesty, this, this thing's absolutely incongruous to the street. Our neighborhood is, although it's got architectural similarities, this thing dominates the block. As I said before, we've got a few two-story buildings. All of these are there. With approval of things this size, I feel like it's doing nothing but putting a bullseye on every duplex or rental property in our neighborhood. For somebody to come in, cram as much square footage, it's all about the money. That's what this thing is. The neighborhood doesn't feel that we've gotten any type of cooperation. I don't know that that's what's owed to us, but it doesn't feel right. Outside developers coming in, putting this stuff in there, they make their profits and they're gone. You know, we're the ones that are forced to live with this in the aftermath of this. This is a wedge in the door. And again, every duplex in our neighborhood is going to be at risk for this type of development. And so I'd just like to personally say that anything that the, that you guys can do to help us out with limiting the size and the scope of this, be greatly appreciated. For the other folks that couldn't be here today, I know they feel the same way. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Any others? You can come forward.
Favor?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, people who are in favor of it are welcome to start coming now too. I apologize for that.
My name is Scott Troxel. I do not live in Woodland and Waverly. I live in the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood. I'm a realtor. I sell predominantly in historic neighborhoods. Was one of the people that helped start the Belmont Hillsborough Neighbors Conservation Overlay. Cottage, first of all, cottage-style development has always been a part of the fabric of American neighborhoods. Pasadena, California, has some wonderful examples of it. It's also a recent trend where this model is being applied in existing neighborhoods throughout, throughout the U.S. I do feel like it is in scale with other homes in the neighborhood. And if these properties are developed as just individual houses, those structures will be certainly larger than what you see in the cottage-style development. So I think this is a positive addition to Woodland and Waverly. It is a change. It's a different model than you see in Woodland and Waverly, but it is in keeping with historic neighborhoods in Nashville. And I think it would be great to see more cottage-style developments in neighborhoods in Nashville. And also, it does provide an affordable option. And obviously, affordable in this context is going to be considerably higher than the duplexes that exist there now. But we do need some affordable options rather than a large-scale home that would likely go on these lots. It would probably be priced 700, 800,000 instead. These, I'm going to guess, will probably be in the 400, 450 range. So that's all.
Thank you. Are there others for or against? Like to come forward now, just, name and address?
I'm Colby Sludge. I live at 614 Moore Avenue. I live in the neighborhood of Wedgewood, Houston, which is right on the other side of 65 from Woodland and Waverly. I can't tell you that I'm for or against this property, but as I've read through, I was contacted from concerned residents in Woodland and Waverly primarily about conversations or lack of conversations between the developer and neighborhood leaders. And I know that you don't deal, this body doesn't deal with that. But so I took a look at the properties and I went through the, the street. And I know that we've talked about the fact there's a lot of non-contributing structures on this street. And I think there is a concern that even though some of these structures might be closer to contributing structures in the neighborhood than non-contributing structures, the fact is much of this street does not look like the historic contributing structures that are throughout the rest of Woodland and Waverly. And I think that concern should be considered by the commission about what, what we're talking about when we're looking at directly on this street. The other thing I would like to just kind of be educated about is when we talk about a cottage-style development in a historic overlay, when we look at sort of a courtyard structure within Woodland and Waverly's historic overlay, I am at least not aware, as I've gone through the neighborhood, of another structure that's similar to this, of the courtyard structure. I may be mistaken, but I would be interested to see as, you know, neighborhoods around Woodland and Waverly, we don't have a historic overlay. We would never get a historic overlay. But as we consider SPs, to see kind of how that's considered when we're talking about not necessarily contributing structures, but contributing design. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, closed public hearing. Open commissioners to discussion.
So let me understand our charge here. This property was rezoned, SP, and they're looking for us to approve the improvements to the SP zone. That need to be compatible in theory with the surrounding neighborhood based on the guidelines.
That's correct.
And could I follow up on that? Our charge here is no different than any other application. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So this, this design has been approved by planning? Or has not?
It is your job to approve the design.
The number of...
Just to answer your question, sorry. The planning commission has approved the SP. And, and the preliminary SP has already gone through council and been approved, right?
And, but you do still have the ability to change the layout, change the...
This entire master plan is up, is in our lap?
Yes, except for the number of units.
Except for the number of units?
Right.
Okay, so we, the seven, I mean, the, nine units, is that right? No, eight units, I'm sorry. That's already been approved?
That's correct.
Okay. That's a valid question, I'll answer.
I'm going to lean a little bit on Germantown neighborhood, just because I'm familiar with it. Wrote guidelines that were in response, I think, to this. I'm not sure, I believe the project was approved prior to that district. And while what applies in Germantown may not necessarily apply. In this district, I think it's, the realities of, of the situation are that you've got three non-contributing structures that are, you know, are they any more or less contrib, any more or less part of the fabric than this will be? That's certainly an argument to be taken into account. In, in terms of the success of the infill development that occurred in Germantown, which is of similar scale to this project, both in its height and in its orientation to the street, I can say that that, to the point that was made by someone who spoke in favor was that it was a more affordable option than, in considering infill housing in, in town neighborhoods, than put in, you know, what, what the cost of land's going to, going to demand and what the alternative might be, which would be a two-story monster, at least in application here. And so as much as this might not be consistent with the smattering of homes that are on the street, just in terms of single-family home, front yard, front porch, you know, backyard with or without an outbuilding, in that condition, certainly in Germantown, a development, a cottage development like this was, was not, was not detrimental, I think, to the, to the fabric of the neighborhood. And it, as a development pattern, was not unheard of.
And looking at the, at the aerial view in the packet, just eyeballing this, the front facade seemed to be consistent with those adjacent to and across White Avenue. And quite frankly, the rhythm of homes is exactly the same. They're taking away three and putting back three, and basically building back, which should not upset the historic nature at or on the street, in my opinion. Although the, the density granted of this proposal is, is very non-congruent with the street, but on the street, you shouldn't really know what's going on behind those three street-facing facades. And I also wasn't aware that the, the back portion of these cottages was so much higher than the, the three on the street. That I, maybe I missed that.
Can staff address that? The rear units, are they taller? And if so, how much?
Just give me a minute to look at the analysis to see if these, these figures were taken by grade, from grade or from...
And one last thing while we wait. I certainly heard what the residents said and to a certain point, agree. I also think that density in close-lying suburbs is always a good thing. If it can be as congruent on the street as this appears to be.
In terms of, of height, and I think I'm looking at the context photos at 2105, so it says to the north. I don't know if that's directly adjacent to the site.
It is.
So that's directly adjacent to the site. That's a steeply sloped, you know, unless I'm misreading that, I think our roof lines are certainly not contrasting greatly from, from in my mind's eye, this house next to the cottage. And I look at 2208, I'm guessing, which looks like it's on the other side of, of these homes, unless that's a replica across the street of, maybe, maybe that is an infill, I'm not sure. But third, third picture from the top, I'm guessing that's 2208 with the red fire hydrant out in front of it. Again, you know, you've got probably a, a 12-foot clear height on that historic house in the inside and then, you know, an attic with some lookouts. There's a clipped roof form on the front of that. I don't know this, but I'm guessing that overall heights of the structures are certainly, in comparison to those two historic examples in the pictures that are given here, don't seem to be contrasting greatly purely from a, a height analysis in those two. You know, one and a half or, yeah, one and a half stories, I think, would be an accurate description of those, those two that I pointed out in particular.
In terms of the previous question about the height of the front units compared to the height of the interior units, you, I was basing these heights off of kind of from grade to the top. So the architect has drawn kind of different foundation heights, I'm assuming taking into height the grade. So we are comparing kind of from the grade that's shown on the drawings to the top bridge. And we found that according to those drawings, that the houses in the back would be one foot taller. You know, obviously, a lot can change with the grade and that may or may not be accurate, but that's what the drawings are showing. We do, we do try to verify in the field that when they're doing the finished floor height, that the finished floor height is compatible to the finished floor height of the historic structures around it so that, you know, the foundation should be taking into consideration the, the grade and everything should be kind of on equal terms, we would hope.
And my first instinct, I think, was I was a little overwhelmed by what I was seeing and kind of hard to digest it all. But if you look at the contributing versus non-contributing homes that surround it, you get a little bit more sympathetic to what's proposed. I'm still not totally on board, but the fact that, you know, these roofs are 25 to 26 feet tall is actually a lot less than what I thought when I first looked at it. Some of these appear to be, you know, 30 feet tall or something, and they're really not. I think they're surprisingly short, if that's the right term. This one is 27 feet, but we've seen stuff that's 32 maybe at times, so a little encouraged by that. Here's one that's 20, less than 24 feet. Just kind of talking out loud.
I think the heights are important, though. That's kind of, that helps with the context.
I agree with previous comments about, you know, essentially, this was three, I assume 50-foot wide lots, three lots from the street that'll have three structures on it. You know, they do seem to be within scale of the community. I think citing Germantown as well as, there's at least one example in near, I don't know if it's in East End or near East End, but that, you know, you look at those and whether they were approved before or after the zoning ordinances or the historic overlay was put in place. Assuming they didn't tear down any historic homes, like this, this one's not proposing to, you know, they fit in great in the community. And they provide a more affordable option often and, and work. And, you know, sitting on the planning commission as well, as you know, the planning commission's supportive of infill when it makes sense and in, in-town neighborhoods, more urban areas. And, and again, this, I think, provides another opportunity for, for affordable housing that otherwise you may not get if someone were to build new there. And I don't recall if the zoning here is RS or R. I don't know if any of the staff knows it's R.
It's R, right. I'm not sure if it's R6 or R8, but it's zoned for two-family.
Right, right. So, and I recall this coming through planning commission back in the spring, that it was currently zoned for six, six units, you know, which could be, or previously zoned for six units, like, I guess, the adjacent homes. So this is eight, you know, probably smaller footprints than what you might do as duplexes. And it's a good model. On the rain, the rain garden, you know, I think, you know, it's interesting because we don't, we don't have as many of the historic preservation zoning overlays. And so I was thinking to myself, so if I, if I want to change my lawn, or lack thereof, out front of my house, you know, I'm in Eastwood, so that wouldn't apply, I guess. But if, but it's inter, I didn't, I'm not sure I fully realized that if, if someone wants to change sort of a typical lawn into, say, a zero-scape or all, you know, sort of prairie stograsses, you know, those kind of, you know, something that might be out of character with the neighborhood, this commission could disapprove that and, and sounds like should disapprove that, if it's not consistent with the neighborhood.
You don't review plantings necessarily, but this is a little bit different. There's a wall involved and there's, you know, depression in, in the front yard. And this is a historic preservation overlay. So you would approve this even if it wasn't part of new construction, if it was a change someone wanted to make at a later time? Did that answer your question?
We would see it if it was a change.
For this one. It's a historic preservation zoning overlay as opposed to the conservation.
I'm not even sure residents realize, if you're going to do your landscaping in your yard, you've got to submit for...
Not, not the plants themselves, but if there's some sort of structural change or grade, you know, major grade change, we would.
Okay. Well, that said, I mean, you know, I think the, and I don't know if the staff... Well, that said, I mean, you know, I think the, and I don't know if the staff has a concern about the low walls. I thought the low walls were kind of a nice touch to be able to screen that sort of inconsistency in grade, and, but, you know, I think the rain gardens are a great solution, low-impact solution, and they tend to be, they tend to want to be where the grade is, you know, where the water flows to. So I'm not sure I'm opposed to the current plan, as is with the rain gardens in the front.
I agree with you about the rain gardens, as far as a landscape style at the street. Typically, we're seeing this more in urban environments, where it is a little more loose with plantings. The challenge here for the developer, I concede, if he takes these into the courtyard, he's got to make this thing into somewhat of a bowl. So the, I mean, the natural positioning for these is at the street. So if, does anyone remember how, is there a lip on this, on the wall in front of the rain gardens?
We don't have any drawings or any information about it.
It's a 24-inch tall wall, according to the site plan, I think. Is that...
There's a section on drawing C30 that shows the, I mean, it's a typical section. It shows a four-foot max height, but I think it kind of gives you, if you look top, or middle of the page, left, the topmost drawing there on C30, it shows a finished grade, you know, up with a couple of masonry pieces on the top, and then, you know, kind of a brick masonry-type wall. And so I think that's an indication of what we're looking at here.
The site plan calls out a 24-inch-high knee wall around. Is that what's currently planned?
Yes.
Sure, please. Is that...
Yeah, I guess it's a rather, just more of a structural, generic detail on C30. What you were speaking to, Mr. Mosley, it's, you know, intended to be just a CMU wall. It would have a four-inch cap on top of it. You know, the materials of that would be worked out either with you guys or through staff, as far as masonry, stone, et cetera.
Is a, well, quick question. The grade, make sure I'm understanding this properly, and I think so. The grade is taller, the grade is lower at the sidewalk and taller interior to the lot. Is that correct, or is it flipped? Okay.
It's, I'm sorry, I've got to run, but it's labeled as a knee wall, because that's how it will present towards the street, but technically, I guess it is kind of retaining the bi-retentionary rain garden behind it.
Just kind of seat wall, knee wall, and same thing. Very good, thank you. I think historically, we often see, I mean, that is historically present throughout districts. And I guess, if you look at the photographs, I don't know if it's present here or not, but...
If it goes down, if it's called out as a retaining wall, then I think there might be, maybe perhaps some railing issues, or things of that nature. Even though it's not over, even over three feet, I don't think it's an issue, but...
If you look at 2217, 2219, and 2223, it is not an uncommon detail in the neighborhood to have a low wall that retains some level of earth.
I suppose we could, if we, what concerns me is the condition that eliminates the rain gardens in the front yard. I mean, there may be a condition where a portion of the stormwater could be captured by rain gardens in the courtyard, whereas a portion of it may still need to be, you know, more practical to be captured in the front yard, and thus minimizing, you know, so if we were to eliminate that condition, we could perhaps suggest the applicant work on, you know, where it's feasible to move some of the rain gardens to the courtyard, thus minimizing those.
I think perhaps, and if I look, if I'm not misreading the details, I'm not sure that the label of a rain garden on the drawing, it appears to be a significant detail, but I think if you were to look at many of the multifamily projects that come through, and shows some side mulch and plantings, I don't think, my understanding of it, it's not any different than that, and there may be some, you know, two-inch rock that's in that. I don't know that it would stand out as drastically different from what you would expect to see as a landscaped yard. And perhaps the staff just needs more information, rather than a change in design. I could be speaking out of turn there, but perhaps they need, just need a little bit more information, further develop plans, that it not necessarily be moved from one location to the next.
Right.
It may not even appear to be anything other than...
What a rain garden looks like varies greatly.
It does, certainly, it does. So more information would certainly be helpful.
Most of the things that go on with the rain garden go on underground. It does come across as a typical planting bed. I think in this context here, it's going, and I don't think we can, we don't have any jurisdiction over that, but the types of plants that will be used here will be so foreign to most of the homes on the street because of their nature and their abilities. It's going to have a little six-inch dip in the middle, basically. And it'll have mulch, and it'll look just like any planting bed that we ever see. That's pretty much it.
Robin, has the site plan been approved by planning? I mean, the footprints for each home?
They did, but you have the ability to change that. You have the ability to review and approve the entire design.
The widths of the structure...
Relative to the guidelines.
But is staff comfortable with the widths of the structure relative to the surrounding compatible structures as well?
I'll be honest, this was a really tough one. As Commissioner Mosley said, there's several in Germantown. Germantown has a very different feel. Lots are smaller, tighter, closer together. This one's a little bit different. New for us, we didn't quite know how to address it. The applicant was great, and really worked with us on bringing the massings of all the homes down. Is this the best solution? I'm not, you know, we're not sure. It is a lot for this neighborhood. It may be that the rear home should be significantly smaller. We've since had the opportunity to do some research in what other communities have done, and the rear units of a cottage development like this, the rear homes are significantly smaller. So it's, I apologize, we can't give you 100% clear direction, but it's new for us, too.
Again, just judging by this aerial photograph and their site plan, are these widths drastically different? They strike me to be almost the same, except for the, maybe the space for the sidewalk.
We thought the height and widths of the first three homes on the street met the rhythm of the street, yes.
Okay, that's precise what I was talking about.
We don't have a view from the street into the whole thing. Is that correct?
Nope, we don't. There are some perspective drawings in your packets. I think if you looked at the perspective drawing of the first unit, that kind of will show you an aerial of, not an aerial, but kind of a perspective of what it'll look like along White, but not, not a street view.
Richard, what's kind of helpful for me in judging, you have to suspend a little bit, but if you, I've taken C20 and 30 and kind of folded it in half, and you have the existing next to the new, in terms of what rhythm that establishes.
Right.
Now, granted, there are eight units on this site. It's more dense than the surrounding sites, so there's no, there's just, it's the elephant in the room here. There's no denying that. And I think, you know, that is what is being presented, and certainly, that's gone through the vetting process, at planning, and that is a strategy in Metro that has been deemed acceptable. It's up to us to determine whether that's acceptable in a historic district, but if you look at the front that the existing buildings put to the street, and these, do they contrast greatly? I think that's the question you're trying to ask. And if you take some of the hatching off of the plan and look at those, maybe that will help in your analysis. I don't want to tell you what to think, but maybe that'll help in your analysis of what's existing, what's possible, you know, if there were single-family homes put here, and then what's proposed.
Is there some lingering question about the houses in the rear being taller, or with you?
Again, it's just new for us, and we're not really 100% sure of the best direction to give you. Again, they do seem to have worked very well in Germantown, but there is an argument for Germantown being a little bit different in terms of its historic context.
Here's a quick thought. If this, if we weren't looking at this plan, and these were additions being put onto existing homes, is there a max roof line rise that we would allow as it goes upgrade?
That's kind of hard to answer without there really being an existing home, because the additions will, you know, an appropriate addition depends on what the historic home is.
Okay. I'm just trying to get my head around, I mean, this thing's going to fall towards the street, so, I mean, they're not, they won't be hidden behind the street facades.
What we don't have is a site section.
That's correct. It would be nice.
Especially difficult since the density's already been predetermined. It's just a matter of, you know, determine how to address the already...
I think, Richard, maybe to speak to the point of, or well, to both of those, is it's hard to see, but I think 2219 white, and then 2223 white are two of the larger homes in the district. And the question is, would those homes be appropriate as infill on these lots? That's our question, whether it's the question, you know, here, that's not what's being presented to us. But as, if you've got a lot that slopes from back to front, you're generally going to have a higher porch than if you've got the opposite effect, and we see projects like that all the time. And so if you're trying to, I think you're trying to analyze this, and what's appropriate height for the back versus the front units, or how that would be handled across the site, that may be a way that you can reconcile what's going on here, and what, how that might present to the street differently. The fact that it's broken up allows you maybe to work with the grades, and you've got a, you've got a shingle roof form up there that doesn't present itself as massively to the front. If it were sloping back to front, and you had a porch with 10 steps, eight steps on the front of it, certainly, we'd look very closely at something like that, if it were a single-family home that had considerable depth to it. But here, I think, as you're viewing this from the street, and you're seeing shingled roof, or roof form, behind roof form as it gets further and further back, we consider those items often, and, you know, you're not a bird, it's not a bird's eye view, it's a street-level view, and that may help to understand whether this is appropriate or not, or may help in the analysis.
I just, well, I just want to be comfortable that you're not looking at 2208 with 2219 behind it. I'm saying...
Agreed. I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that you need to look at it anyway in particular, it just was a way to analyze it.
That's my largest concern. I like this project, I think it's well-done, but I share the, I share the neighborhood's concerns, that I do believe, barring what's behind the first three units, I believe it addresses the street just fine, but if you start seeing rooftops in the distance, all of a sudden, it looks like someone just built a condo, building on your historic street. And that would concern me, too, and I would really like a view, if I was standing on the street, I'd really love to know accurately what that's going to look like. I really would. So in that regard, I share some of the neighborhood's heartache.
Okay, so where we think we're going? Do we want to, sorry, it's a recommendation about maybe the, want to add to there? There's 11 conditions also already, too, that we want to make sure we just look at, too, but is there any of these, any other condition we want to make maybe to these rear units, or not?
I mean, I hate to postpone things, and I'm not speaking out loud. I don't know if it would be appropriate to get something next month that's got a site section and a better perspective of what's going on from the street. You know, I hate pushing stuff out, but I don't know if that's, we want to consider that, or just try to act on what we got today.
I'm with you, Richard. The last thing I want to do is hold up someone's project, but given, I just think this project is all about the street and what it looks like when someone is standing on it. And I think that information is more pertinent than most things in this very thick packet, and I would like to see it.
Unfortunately, we can't, yeah, we can't call for a deferral or anything.
You could ask the applicant, if you'd like.
Yeah, the applicant would have to decide if they would want to defer it to give us that, otherwise, we just have to go on what we've got.
Can, maybe I can help, maybe staff can assist us here, because I think we have the information. We just may have to dig a little bit forward.
Real quick, I do notice the applicant has got his computer out. Has he, has he got something?
How's it come alive? Is it all right?
Yeah, do you have something that's...
Fade on that thing? PowerPoint?
Oh, yeah.
It's the model. And we can get to any view you might see, I just can't do this, but...
Can you, it won't hook up, it'll be too much trouble, won't it?
I think, and as we get a chance to see this, maybe we can leave it up for those in the room, and make it part of the public record for those that need to view it, and maybe if we can get a camera on it, just so it's part of the record. But one of the things I'd like staff's help with, to maybe get us through this, is on C50, it calls out finished floor elevations and gives a grading plan.
Where are you?
I'm on, drawing C5.0, so, you know, you're out at the street here, and you're at five, let's say, 519 is the apex, or the peak of the street. 527 is your finished floor, so you've got a two-foot knee wall, and the grade's moving up, two or three feet there, and 527 at the tallest part on the street, and I'm sure the street is, actually, the street looks pretty level. You've got 526 in the middle house, 525 in house number one. And where I could use help from staff is, if they could give us the heights of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, and actually, it may be deeper in the packet here, and maybe we can just get to the bottom of this, height concern or issue, and kind of a view angle. Oftentimes, that's how we review these things, and...
I'm going to move up to the podium while there is...
Move on.
...technology happening.
Where does the, where does the architect go? Can you tell us the heights real fast of the difference?
I thought that's what those, we had that on the screen just a few minutes ago, right?
All right, so the street is lower. That's where you're going from here.
And we're missing the two-foot knee wall in the front, but I think you can imagine what that is. And, you know, I think where we're going from here is, is eye-level height, and, you know, as you can see, we're pretty consistent running back through there, in terms of one being more dominant, or, and I think you could argue, part of what's, part of what you have to wrap your mind around, and then certainly part of this is the community's members that are stakeholders that have spoken on this, and their concern is that, this is eight units, I think, whether you accept eight units on this site or not as appropriate has to do with whether this is appropriate or not in terms of height. If it were three tear downs, and you were putting in infill at this site, is it going to be, that seems to be, to me, to be the alternative, other than the status quo, which is one-story duplexes that remain, and this buyer has bought the land and intends to develop it. Is this, it's based, its evaluation's based on its merits as a project, but could it be better, worse, more or less, with three duplexes on it?
But what's encouraging is that the three in the front, basically, read as one-and-a-half story buildings.
Yeah.
And I can only imagine what this thing probably started out as. It had to be some serious tweaking, because no one comes to us with 26-story height, 26-foot tall buildings.
Yeah, this does help describe it a lot, actually. I mean, I guess, like we're saying, with the density, we don't have any control over, so it's...
So does this model, does it in fact take effect? I think I see contours in this model, okay?
Exactly, as is shown on the site.
And all roof lines are accurate? Okay. That's all I need to see.
Except for the rear ones. Maybe they're chopped out. They're just at a higher elevation.
Can you also, just for record, to provide this to staff, I mean, not the model, but this drawing, just... this drawing, just because we're using, yeah, this perspective?
Sure.
Yeah, just like a snap of it, because we're, this is helping us make our decision, I guess.
This is very helpful.
Right there if you want to.
This is very helpful, and, you know, I'm going to make a motion that we approve staff recommendation with one exception. I'd like to suggest that we, trying to find the rain guard, here we go, number, condition number 10, that we change that because it is, it's so, it basic, I think it's going to be really challenging, and I'm not sure that it's necessarily going to be, have a negative impact to have rain gardens in the front yard, and may not even be able to tell it from any other landscape, you know, bed in the neighborhood. So we could either remove it and encourage the developer to work with historic and to move some of the rain gardens to the, or we could make that the condition, I guess, we could just change the condition to work with staff to attempt to minimize the rain gardens in the front.
That's good.
You like that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, so the motion is to move that we approve staff recommendation, and with the exception of condition number 10, which should read that the applicant work to reduce the rain gardens in front of the structures 1, 2, and 3, maybe that's enough.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion?
Is that clear from staff's perspective? Reduce is, okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, 1706 to 1708 Fourth Avenue North.
Great discussion, because this is the same thing. So, 1706 slash 1708 Fourth Avenue North is actually one parcel that currently has two non-contributing structures on it, and it also was recently zoned, rezoned to SP, allowing up to six detached dwellings. Demolition of the two non-contributing structures meets the design guidelines. The six new detached dwellings that are proposed are, would follow the site plan that it was, or preliminary site plan that was approved by the planning department, or planning commission, I should say, and Metro Council, and staff finds that this proposal meets guidelines to B-C, to B-1-F, and K setbacks in rhythm of spacing and orientation for multi-unit developments. This one also has a bio-retention area, an original proposal showed it in the front, but I think this one actually can be moved to the interior courtyard, but not that it's much concern, one, this is a conservation overlay, and two, I think you just had that discussion anyway. So, the, in reviewing the proposal, staff found that the heights, I guess we should say even just back up, generally, the proposal met the design guidelines pertaining to height, scale, materials, window proportions, driveway, sidewalks, et cetera. I've gone into some more detail in your written recommendations, but just since, again, you already had similar discussion as far as scale and configuration, a lot of that same thing applies. And, again, much like the last one with the condition, staff's one condition of concern is that, so here you have 1706 and 8A, which are towards the front, and then B and C are the two sets of rear structures, so this is the elevation you would see from Fourth Avenue, the two structures which have gabled roofs, and the only difference is essentially that the, they're mirrored plans, but the roofs are rotated 90 degrees also. These are the front elevations, the courtyard elevations of the rear structures. Our concern is that the rear structures here, the B and C units are taller than the front units, so staff is recommending that the rear units, the height of that be reduced by five feet, with that as a condition and the other materials and things that I mentioned before, staff rec, I guess I'll just sum it up, staff recommends approval of the application to demolish the non-contributing structures and construct six new buildings with the conditions that the finished floor heights along Fourth Avenue North and the front setbacks be consistent with adjacent historic houses, that the heights of the B and C buildings, which are the ones at the rear, be reduced by five feet, that some windows be added to the left side of 1706A on the first floor and upper level on the right side, and to the left side of 1708A on the first floor, on the right side and the upper level as well, excuse me, on the right side as well, that roof colors, materials of the porch floor, steps, windows and doors, and exterior pavings be approved by staff, and that the air conditioner, HVAC be located behind the houses or on a non-street-facing elevation beyond the midpoint. Meeting those conditions, staff finds that this meets the Salem Town design guidelines.
All right. Any questions to Sean at this time?
Sean, on the last one, it didn't seem like there was a whole lot of concern about the rear structures being significantly subordinate to the front ones. Here, there is a very specific concern, is that because the front buildings, everything is so much bigger on this one and everything was much smaller on the other?
Yeah, the, these structures, the last ones were shorter, these, the front structures are 31 feet from grade to the ridge, and the rear structures are 33, I think I have those numbers right, I just, so the rear structures on these are not, staff didn't find that the height was subordinate, and also the grade does rise from the street to the alley on this as well, so there was more concern about the height or subordinate height for the rear than on the previous application.
I'll add to that, too, the context here is also very different, there's only one two-story historic home in all of Salem Town, but you recognize that there's a whole lot of new construction and have allowed for two-story homes, but with every single thing we do there, we're trying to pull that massing down, you also don't see two-story porches, so you see those on the interior lots, the interior buildings, so we were just, again, trying to bring that overall massing of the whole project down.
As we look at these, it's nice that they're back-to-back, because we're sort of wading our way through to formulate some kind of coherent policy, hopefully, and I think our last decision was well-discussed and made a lot of sense. Is it fair to say we're sort of moving towards a policy, if we look at this with staff recommendation, we were moving towards a policy that says you can either reduce the height and massing of everything and keep them all relatively the same height, or if you want to go as big as context will allow on the front, you really need to bring the rear down to offset that, is that kind of what you all were thinking when you put these side-by-side and made your recommendations?
I don't know that it's quite that simple, just because the contexts are so different.
Yeah, okay.
Again, it's hard to put a formula on these things.
Just trying to make apples and apples.
Okay. I should add that the applicant, I don't know if they're here, guess not, they did say that they're willing to work with us on the conditions, including the one about reducing the height, and they've already sent some things, the kind of, they're working on it, but they sent something yesterday afternoon that really, I don't think was all the way there, and I guess, I thought they'd be here to maybe present or try to explain that, but I really didn't have enough time to thoroughly review it anyway, so that's why I didn't present it to you today.
That's fine, we'll just go by this, since, so the applicant not here, not here today? Okay, thanks, Sean. Okay, open public hearing, anyone that'd like to speak regarding this project, if you'd come forward? Robin, that's not a for, is it that you're speaking with, do they need to come forward, or the person you're speaking with? Okay, okay, thanks. Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
Just real quick to Aaron's point, and I don't know where the, our stance on this is going to lie, but it's going to wind up, but it seems to me that any situation like this, this, the rear units should almost always, unless there's a hardship, be subordinate to the street-facing facades, in order to keep the historic character of the street. That's my two cents, I just wanted to say that.
Okay, I think it would depend on some of the neighborhoods, but that's a good point.
You all may find this crazy, but I don't see this one as like the one that appeared before it in any way. I'm much less a fan of this one than I am the other one, and I'll tell you why.
Much less or more?
Much less, you know, there's less context, and so all this may be moot, but this one is, you know, is 20 pounds and a five-pound stack. You might make the argument the other one maybe had a little bit too much unit on it, but the distinction I guess I'm making here is that as a pattern of development, having three lots in a historic district that you can combine and do three more moderately scaled homes on, excuse me, eight more moderately scaled homes on with an actual courtyard between them that is a pleasant place to be in, this one doesn't nearly for me pass the eye test as the last one did, and those in the audience and folks watching at home may find that completely unbelievable or baffling, but this one to me does not do that successfully at all, I think it's just trying to cram six houses on two single-family lots, that is what it's doing, and it's not doing it terribly effectively in terms of scale and creating a courtyard space that is, you know, is a place, a place you want to live or be. Again, that's my, just first, without digging into the very specifics of it, in terms of the overall, I'm not sure encouraging, and Hunter Planning may vehemently disagree with this, encouraging side-by-side non-contributing structures to come down and put six units that are two stories and are two, you know, putting six single-family house, single-family houses on a lot and kind of breaking the rhythm of the street, a lot of that creates a, you know, there's not a, it's not an anomaly in the rhythm of single-family homes in an in-town neighborhood, it is maybe more the rule, once it's done once, it's kind of continues. I don't know if you can make a, if there is a distinction to be made between my argument here and the case that we previously heard, but I think there's a difference, and I certainly see a difference in this project versus the previous project.
I think just for, I think most of you all probably know this, but I think it's important to understand that when the planning commission, as I've mentioned before, the planning commission's generally in favor of infill and densification and all the benefits that come along with that, but they look really closely at the policy in the community plans, and so it's pretty rare that within, within, or typically, the policies support, you know, the decision of the, of the commissions, so, and I don't know what the policy was here specifically, but my suspicion is that the land use policy in this area is one that suggests that additional density may be appropriate, and that may even suggest that it's a sort of a transition area. So that's sort of the perspective that the planning commission comes at these with. Now, it is important to know, and I think it's probably important, I think these cases have really brought these to light, that plant, historic, our staff members are asked for comments and recommendation from the planning department on SPs or any kind of rezoning that occurs within the, within the historic overlays, so I think, you know, obviously, well, so we rely on our staff to weigh in as much as, you know, as much as they can during that process. So I'm curious, I don't recall on this one, I'm not even sure if I saw this one before the planning commission, but I'm curious if staff had concerns about this at the SP level.
We've definitely had concerns with all of the cottage developments, there's been several others that you haven't seen, that people have been talking about this one, I believe this applicant has talked about this one for a few years, or other applicants have talked about the same situation. So we struggle with all of them, and it is tough to give recommendations when all you have is a site plan at that time, we don't usually have elevations, and so we don't really have any idea what the massing of those structures might be beyond just seeing that site plan, footprints.
And just re-stating once again, though, that the six units, we have no bearing over, is, the six units are already approved, and the only thing we can do is discuss about how they've done the units on there. And I think the point you're making, Ben, is that the, the houses are not in the context, I guess the best way to say it still, because that's what you do about the density.
I personally see a difference in taking three lots and organizing units around a central courtyard as a development pattern and taking two lots, which is much more prevalent of a situation, and so therefore will be repeated, it changes the fabric of the neighborhood, in my opinion. I could be wrong in how many of these opportunities happen, but I know there's less contributing fabric in Salem Town and at the edges of some of our districts, and as a development pattern, is this a good thing? I mean, my opinion is on two lots that are adjacent to each other to cram six units on it, looks like you cram six units on two lots, I mean, that's, on the eye test, that's just where I come down on it, and I don't see it as a, it's taking a side yard and making it a front yard and is just, you-
Yeah, my opinion is similar to yours, actually, on both of them, that's why I kept asking that question, I felt like both of them are too many, but since that's something we can't debate now, I think we just have to-
Well, we can, though, I mean, six units is approved.
Yeah.
But that doesn't entail-
Footprint's not approved.
Footprint's not approved, and how you get to six is not approved. I mean, Robin, am I right, Susan, that you could say, no, this isn't even close, we're going to require duplexes in the front and a home and a home behind it? We can totally reconfigure it, I believe, so six doesn't mean six structures, six could mean four structures, six could mean two triplexes, I don't know, I'm just-
Okay, well, that's good.
We have, I think we have a lot more flexibility and are not really all that boxed in by these SPs, they're daunting, but-
Well, I'm glad you-
Because we have this figure in mind, but I think there's still a lot of flexibility with how you can get from A to B, and this one seems to not be nearly as thoughtful as the last one. I think Ben has made those points, and some of the differences, and another one to add is it's just a row of ten parking spaces in the rear, I mean, it's like an apartment building.
Yeah.
And-
I'm glad you clarified that, so that is good to hear, but-
If I could add to that clarity, too, and maybe ask Ms. Jones, if this, if this plan were to significantly change, which perhaps this body has the ability to do, it could trigger the owner having to go back through planning commission, is that correct, with the final SP, if the plan is determined by the executive director of the planning department?
That could be the case, yeah, that could be the case, depending on how different it is from what was originally approved under the SP, because the SP has the force of law, having been approved as an ordinance, and also having been approved by the planning commission based on a site-specific design and some criteria that I would assume, and I can't, I'm kind of like you, I can't recall this specific case before the planning commission, but going through its normal course of action, certain things may have been specifically spelled out, and without the SP in front of you as you're reviewing that, you wouldn't necessarily know if you're deviating in a manner that would require them to go back to the planning commission and the council, but that could possibly be the case. I would just add that if they have been approved by the planning commission and they do, and they are in compliance with the SP, then by right, they can develop six- they do, and they are in compliance with the SP, then by right, they can develop six, six different structures. However, the scale, the massing, how they're configured on the lots and things like that, the setbacks, the height, the things that are consistent with your guidelines can affect, you know, how that is, how that is fleshed out and what ultimately the project looks like.
Six units means six structures, or does the SP have to say six single-family homes?
A lot of times, it may say something like up to six, in terms of how the staff recommendation from planning commission is written. However, without seeing what it was that was before the planning commission and what was attached to the SP, I don't know whether it was that specific, how specific it was, in other words.
That seems like critical information for us to know what to do, or to know what our parameters are and what is possible.
Well, and I guess it would kind of depend on whether or not, if, you know, if you're okay with the six structures but want to reconfigure or want to make design decisions with regard to that, then you may be able to go with what you have, but if you're thinking that you're not sure if that actually fits, that whole scheme fits within the historic zoning context, then yeah, that might be some information that you may want to have before you make a final decision on it. But again, if it's been approved by council and approved by the planning commission as an ordinance, he has by right up to six, six units.
The reason to know, like, if this plan was approved, right?
Sean, can you, is 1704 contributing? Is 1710?
1704, I guess you can't quite see it on that one. Yeah, the building one south of that is another brick duplex owned by MDHA. I believe the majority of other structures on the block are contributing.
So the house, I think we're moving north, the cross-gabled house just to the north is contributing?
Yes.
This house that is south of the next adjacent duplex is...
With the side porch.
With the side porch is contributing?
Also contributing, yes.
That house looks much closer...
And then actually, the one just one further south at the corner is non-contributing.
Not, so, I mean, if we're trying to figure out a contextual setback here, and whether the front of this, because I think one of the conditions is that, no, is one of the conditions deal with front setback?
Yeah, and typically where it's not a consistent and established setback that's uniform, we say an average of the two.
Most adjacent, or even historic, I mean, we've used historic homes as, in other words, do they have room to give in the front yards, what I'm trying to figure out, is it going to pinch it even further?
Does this particular proposal have room?
Yeah, and instead, is the front setback, did you see it as problematic, or is it, you all...
No, it didn't seem to be problematic in this instance.
And feel, feel free to tell me I'm crazy from the last one to this one, and that it's just not an argument. I mean, if front porches are, and if I'm here, under that of the sofa over there is the front of the, front of the next house, that's the yard on these units. You know, as, again, I could, in that discussion...
I'm very unclear as to what we can and can't really do. I don't know if this plan was approved by planning, and they're looking at us just for massing, and, you know, your, the whole courtyard seems too small thing may not be pertinent. I mean, I totally agree with you, but I don't know if that's even in our purview right now.
Maybe we wouldn't want to get any more of these from planning.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of me, because if we, if we can work with the site plan, but if it's just the houses, then...
And I wasn't, I'm not opposed to a cottage development, but to me, a cottage, this stretches the limits to...
A cottage development.
To that.
Well, if you disapprove the plan, then you've accomplished that, right?
Yeah, I don't know that I have the ability to.
But you can disapprove of what's in front of us, which is the...
Sure, oh, yeah, I just, I, and maybe I'm harping on something that's just not a, you know, not for us to determine.
If you think it's too big, and maybe there's support within us to agree, then the whole thing gets disapproved.
I think we need the SP to understand what are, without, I mean, the SP document itself seems like critical information to understanding what leeway we do and do not have. We do have the internet in this room, and I think we should figure out that and have it read and understand if what was approved is this exact site plan, and then I think all we're talking about is trying to get the massing to work. If it simply says you're entitled to six units, and here's a configuration that would work, that's totally different. But, yeah, can we read it?
Yeah, Sean has actually found the ordinance itself. It says the following conditions, and mind you, there may be a map associated with this that we cannot see due to just inability to have it right, right in front of us right now, but it says the final architectural drawings must be approved by the Metro Historic Zoning Commission prior to approval of any building permit. The rear parking area may be covered if approved by the Historic Zoning Commission. The final site plan shall include detailed landscape and drainage plan demonstrating the bioretention along the Fourth Avenue North function properly and enhances the development, but does not detract from the pedestrian experience along Fourth. It also states that this SP is to change from R6 to SP for property located at 1706 Fourth Avenue North, approximately 175 feet north of Hume Street, .40 acres, to permit up to six detached residential dwelling units.
I mean, I don't think that's mandatory language, but it says up to six. I think, based on that, we should have some flexibility. I think they could do six potentially, but there's an awful lot right now.
Hunter, do you, did you, do you...
I may have missed this meeting.
Be further enacted that the uses of this SP shall be limited to six detached residential uses, and the language continues to read at up to.
So it does say detached, though.
Do you, I mean, do you...
But it says up to.
I'm interested, just from your perspective, planning-wise, am I just full of it, or do you, do you just, what are your feelings about the density of this and as a pattern of development? Or do you disagree with my analysis that, you know, there's frequently you'll find a couple duplexes or two lots you can put together, and that this as a development, a prevalent development pattern in the neighborhood is good?
While you're...
Or desirable.
While you're formulating your answer, do, real quick, Susan, do we have any, since the applicant is not here, do we have any, or for all, be able to, you know, to delay this one, I mean, so that we can get more information from planning at all, since the applicant's not here?
This has got to be up or down, because you've got 30 days, or it's going to otherwise be approved as it is.
So we have, still don't have any kind of... Because we, we really could use more information on it, but anyway...
You'd think the applicant would show up for...
Yeah, it's George to bring that in.
Yeah, so I don't know if we...
I mean, I don't want to delay decision. I can, I can be emphatic about it one way or the other, I can be convinced, but I just...
I believe we're, you're not the only one, I don't think. I mean, I believe we all are, I think it's pretty consensual that we all have questions.
I don't think we can vote it down because we have questions. I mean, I think we can only vote it down because we have something in the guidelines that we think is incongruent.
Well, not necessarily, we don't have enough information. It's almost like if they didn't give us enough information to make a decision.
So maybe the application itself is insufficient.
Yeah, we just don't know enough information to, so we...
I don't, I mean, this application is as complete as others that we've approved. I think if we need to do the difficult work, let's do the difficult work.
Well, we could go through this...
The elevations are here, there's a site plan, and the question is whether, you know, we can do something different than this or not, and I think it may take some time, and I would just be delaying what we'd have to do next go-around if we, if we did it for lack of information. I'm interested to hear other opinions about whether six units on two lots in one of our districts is something that is acceptable or not. And is any different from eight lots, eight units on three lots?
Yeah.
I mean, there's 100-foot of frontage here, there's, the depth is, you know, pretty typical 174, 175.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, I'm willing to be convinced that it's not that different than other things I've seen, but it just, it doesn't appear, it just appears to be too much on two lots.
Well, Hunter, he calls...
You still got a question?
Yeah, Hunter's got a question.
Let me just interject if I might, Mr. Chair, may I be recognized, I'm sorry. I do want to, I would caution the board to maybe proceed with caution to the extent that your discussion hinges around the development rights of the owner, because again, that's really the purview of the planning commission and of the Metro Council, and they've said he can have up to six dwelling units, so he's within what he's allowed to do. But that may ultimately be impacted, depending on what you think they have done to comply or not comply with the design guidelines that you have before you. So I just want, as the discussion proceeds, I just want to make sure that, that the board is aware of that, that I would, I would, you may be able, there may be a way to craft a remedy here that is suitable, or one that's not, but you again have a lot of discretion, even within the design guidelines, to state why you're either for it or state why you're against it, either it meets it or it doesn't, and either it's going to meet it with conditions or it's not going to meet it with those conditions, and you may arrive at a similar conclusion, actually, but...
Okay. Oh, yeah, in stereo. You've asked me my opinion, so, you know, I think, you know, as a planner, I think there are opportunities throughout our urban core, urban neighborhoods to provide alternative housing options, potentially more affordable housing, I don't know if this necessarily is that, but, but to look at other models that may not be consistent, you know, with what we were doing 100 years ago, so. And, you know, I know that, you know, and also I believe that we, you know, Nashville's sort of at a threshold in terms of whether we're going to, you know, grow up or not, and that if you look to those cities that have grown up over the last 20 or 30 years into true, you know, urban centers, they've got a lot more density than we do, and they've got a lot more walkability, and they've got a lot more critical mass that supports transit and supports urban retail and supports those kinds of things. And so I think where we're not tearing down historic structures, I think where by policy, land use policy, if, if the policies and the community plans support more density in urban infill, I think it's appropriate. Now, that said, in this particular case, while I don't like it as much as the last case, I don't know, with the exception of the conditions that the staff has put on it, if it's any different. The things that we talked about on the, on the last one is that the, the pattern from the street in particular is consistent with the neighborhood. If, you know, the homes on the last one were, were smaller than these, and I guess the rear homes were approximately the same size as the front homes, so. So while, again, you know, this isn't my favorite project, and I don't like it without the courtyard in the middle, you really look at how it impacts the neighborhood from either side, it's the same as the last one. It's really sort of internal that it's, that it's different. So, you know, I guess with Ms. Jones' suggestion of us being cautious in terms of how we deal with what they're entitled to, and looking at the previous case, I think I'm prepared to support staff's recommendation, so.
Okay, thanks, Hunter. So why don't we then just take it then that we've got these six units here, and this is, this is what we have, this is the site plan before us, and we're, let's just approach it at that. So after Hunter's summary, what kind of other comments do we have?
I mean, I think the other one was different in that there were more contextual homes, and it made a much better attempt to blend in, you know, the one, at least the one-and-a-half story appearance from the front, and I know we've, Salem Town is almost a clean slate, so that's, I do think there is a difference between the two relative to that.
Mass.
Yeah, and just the contextualization of it relative to the neighborhood. I mean, I don't think this would have worked in the previous one.
No.
So I think that in itself speaks that there is some difference there, as far as massing.
So, yeah, I think that's a good way to approach it, which is similar to yours, Ben, what your, the 20-pound bag or whatever it was.
And I, I mean, I don't, just because I think so doesn't, doesn't make it right, and I think, you know, that, that policy, we don't need to stand in defiance, standing in defiance of planning's policy and just being at loggerheads with new projects that like this that we see every time, I don't know, that's, so. I mean, if they keep sending them to us, then, then, you know, we've got to deal with it, and so, and I'm willing to do that here.
The massing, though, I mean, the six are there, we're going to assume that the six are what we have to deal with, but, but we can talk about how big they are.
And I think Richard's got a, a good point, in that I was thinking more from a, sort of a site plan perspective. I don't see this as being any different from the other. From a massing perspective, the other one had one-and-a-half-story, the front units were, were sort of one-and-a-half-story homes, and...
The roofs have changed, so that's not final, but I forgot I put that in there.
So these are new, new, don't use those words.
They were early renderings, you can see the porches are different, the roofs are different, but it, I think the footprints are reflective of two-story buildings matching that site plan.
Not to muddy the water, but, you know, this is an SP, so somebody went through a process, there's a lot, hopefully, some input from the community, it was negotiated to some degree, and then you get this SP. What happens when we see a grandfather triplex get knocked down in the middle of Belmont Hillsborough? Do they get to build three houses in a row on one lot? I mean, it, we're going down a pretty steep slope, I think, because there's ways to...
I don't think this decision would change what they're allowed to do on that.
Do you think that's totally different? Because, I mean, you still have an applicant coming in saying, I'm entitled to this many units on this lot. I think it gets...
I think we just don't have a...
That's really not for us to say, is it?
I don't see a huge difference.
I think what's challenging, you know, obviously what's challenging is sometimes our guidelines don't necessarily contemplate forms that aren't, you know, weren't part of the traditional fabric of the neighborhood. And, you know, I, I wonder if we should be challenging our staff when these SPs come through to, to really, you know, make sure that concerns around this and the fact that it's going to be challenging within our, within our guidelines to really, or it's going to be challenging to meet our guidelines with a certain SP, perhaps, that we're, that we raise the red flags and raise them high, you know, if it's going to be that challenging. So, and I know that's tough, and I know you guys do that to some degree as well, but I know it is, and it's difficult when you don't have the, you know, when you're just looking at a site plan, too, and so...
What I remember on other Salem Town homes that we've approved that were large is that there's always something in the package that either down the street or across the street or around the block, there's a home that you can say, okay, there's a two-story home. home." So, I can say, "There's some contextualization going on because there's this two-story home somewhere around what we're looking at," but I don't see any of that in here. Am I missing something here, or it's like, there's, there's not that photograph that, you know, you go down the street a little bit and there's this old two-story home?
Yeah, even in the last one, we had some contextual.
There's only one two-story home in the entire neighborhood. It's historic, it's historic. There's a lot of new that's two-story.
All right, um, I'm reading, doing what I should have done more specifically before the meeting, am I reading item K under, uh, new construction, numero, room numero three? Is it, that's part of the guidelines?
I believe, uh, K is multi-unit development sets, that is part of the guidelines for this district.
That's the italicized information and not a set part of the design guidelines, and that was something actually that we came up with when we did that first cottage development in Germantown.
Okay.
So, there's, it's not to say that that certainly couldn't be improved upon, but that's what we had to guide us in writing these staff recommendations.
These, these, this text is, albeit italicized, is, is memorialized in the guidelines that were adopted for this district.
It is, the text is to provide further direction following a past decision for Germantown.
Is not, this, this, item K does not exist in the Salem Town guidelines?
It does not.
Okay.
It, it does, but as italicized information.
It's, I know it's not a guideline, but it is, when we voted on the guidelines, item K, if I look in the Salem Town guidelines, it'll be, it'll be item K italicized in the design guideline?
Yes.
Okay.
It's pretty clear.
Yeah, it does.
Like I said, I can be convinced.
What's that?
I said, like I said, I can be convinced.
Well, I think, um, it's pretty clear here, um, you know, and up to us to whether we feel like, you know, do the interior units, are the interior units subordinate, you know, to those that front the street? It does state that, you know, they're, we're primarily, primarily concerned with the, the buildings facing the street, interior units need not meet the design guidelines for setbacks and rhythm of spacing on the street, um, but it does state that they should be subordinate to those that front the street. And I think that's where the staff has-
Reduced to.
Has suggested they're not, and suggesting a five-foot height reduction, um, in order to make them subordinate, too.
Well, probably the big question is, are units A, one and two compatible with the neighborhood? Because that's where the previous one seemed to succeed in.
Yeah.
And this one, there's really no context. Is that kind of the bottom line of Salem Town?
But don't we have language in the Salem Town guidelines that say that you can use new construction as context, and it's, isn't that the only place we have something like that?
We don't have that, but we've somewhat been doing that, just realizing that the reality is that most of, a good bit of what's there is new.
Is a good bit of what's new anywhere near this project?
It's, unfortunately, the new and the old is all spread out, there's not like a little pocket where you've got, within Germantown, you know, there's a good pocket where you have mostly contributing, and then there's an outer area where it's mostly non-contributing, and so it's easy to say, "Well, we're going to treat this section differently than this." Salem Town, it's kind of 50/50 throughout.
Good. I mean, to me, if we approve something like this, I don't know what the guy, what the conservation overlay does for Salem Town. I mean, that, that's, that's a serious question, I mean, what are we really doing that's different than what anyone would do with the base zoning?
Well, I, I guess it comes down to your opinion of not contrasting greatly, and we've talked about this before.
But it, but it's, it's tough in Salem Town because there's just, there's nothing to compare it to.
Um, right, right, but e, even if, I mean, you could argue that, you know, on one hand, there's no two, no, there's only one historic two-story building, and so, um, but at the same time, does a two-story contrast greatly with a one and a half story? There's probably plenty of in the neighborhood, you know?
Yeah.
And that's, I think that's going to be a matter of, for this, this group to decide, really.
Could we, um, think of a motion that would, um, and I'm pushing it, admittedly, admittedly, but, uh, where we may be, even if we give them some instructions on coming back, that we're, uh, to make it more-
I'm, I'm just, I'm really struggling with the massing, period.
Yeah.
So, I'm just uncomfortable with it, and I get the six, and I get the no courtyard.
Right.
Get all that, it's just, I just think the massing's just too much for this go-around, and I think the previous candidate did a lot of work with the staff to get it right, there, there weren't 30-footy ridge heights, they're all one and a half stories for the most part, and I think this one just can use some tweaking in that regard.
Richard, along those lines, I mean, in, in, I know in, in other cases we've looked at, and we've had some serious discussion about is two-story appropriate in Salem Town in the absence of adjacent contributing context, and I think we've approved some two-story. It's a question, I'm, I'm getting to a question, is, in, in its total mass of six units on these lots, being these, you know, full two-stories with a, you know, with, with a roof on top of that, that's, that's where you're, those things are different, they're not held in the same, in the same regard that it's, um, you know, a, a single-family home that is looking to do something a little different than this one is.
Yeah, I think you're right, I agree with that.
Okay.
So, um, could I just point out, too, sorry, that, um, the guidelines, and this is a guideline for new construction under height, where there's little historic context, existing construction may be used for context, I assume that means any existing construction.
That's-
New or old, and it does state that primary buildings should not be more than 35 feet tall. Are the, the two front units, are they taller than 35 feet?
No. No, they are not.
No.
I believe they're 31 and a few inches.
And it says-
But that's a, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, no, go ahead if you had, clear. Okay. Then states the size of a new building and its mass in relation to open spaces shall be compatible by not contrasting greatly with surrounding historic buildings. So, the question, whether, I guess Richard's suggesting that he feels like these-
Yes.
Contrast greatly with the nearby historic.
And it's multiple. And the mass in relation to open spaces is pretty remarkably different.
So, we, we could have a 3B and a, what is that, 3K kind of thing, if, um, that we feel like, if we, say that again?
I'm sorry.
3B and 3K, we could at least use those two and get them to come back to the drawing board on it? Would you motion?
The one that, uh-
That, that-
Hunter just read this, too.
Yeah, that's one he read, but even the 3K, it's subservient.
Yeah.
So, can we craft a motion?
Sure.
Um, I'd make a motion to disapprove the application based on, um, scale and overall massing, uh, when considering six units on this site, uh, also, um, 3K, where the rear units need to be more subsort, subordinate to the front units. Uh, I think that's it.
Okay. I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, 810 Pettway Avenue.
Hey, Robin, I, I'm sure you already do this, but just in case you don't, anytime we get these cottage developments, could you strongly encourage the applicant to come to the meeting? I think it'd be really helpful to be able to talk.
Um, do you guys mind, um, it's after 5:00, can we make just a quick five-minute break real fast?
Before we break, can I, can we poll those folks that are here in, for a particular case, and rearrange our, rearrange our, our orders so that those folks can be heard and-
I can help you a little bit with that, we have comments for 114 South 17th, 1100 Matthews, 2002 Eastland, and were there any others that anyone wanted to speak to?
Maybe, um, maybe you could work with staff, and then we could get in and get out and be back real quick while you're-
While you're in.
Yeah.
Rearrange the agenda.
I know, but, uh, yes, you know, I mean, I think that's, it's, 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 you ask me the question, well, it's, it is, um, yeah.
1109 Basque Bell, 2815 Twenty-seventh Avenue South, and 3501 Byron.
Are those?
And I recommend that there's a motion to approve all those together.
Are those all recommended for approval?
With conditions, so if you wouldn't mind making that motion with the applicable conditions.
Yeah, do you mind, too? I'm going to repeat it back to you, Robin. 1109 Basque Bell, 1409 Sumner, 916 Fatherland Street, 603 Rudolph Avenue, 810 Petway. I guess I went backwards order, but.
As well as 2815 Twenty-seventh Avenue South and 3501 Byron.
And what was the last one you said again?
3501 Byron.
Okay, gotcha.
You stated it differently, because I mean, we're only going to talk about 114 South Seventeenth Street, 1100 Matthews, and 2002 Eastland?
That's correct.
Okay. The three that we are going to speak more is 114 South Seventeenth Street, 1100 Matthews Street, and 2002, 2002 and a half Eastland Avenue. Now, so for the record, do you want me to read the summary for each one?
No, if we could just have a motion to approve those with their applicable conditions.
Okay. I do have a question. Did we receive any email communications from the community on any of those?
We did not.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that in mind, I'll make a motion to approve the following applications based on staff recommendation and the conditions included therein. And those applications are 2815 Twenty-seventh Avenue South, 3501 Byron Avenue Lot 6, 603 Rudolph Avenue, 916 Fatherland Street, 1409 Sumner Avenue, 1109 Basque Bell Street, and 810 Petway Avenue.
Okay, you have a motion and second. Did we get them all, Robin?
I'm sorry, I'm not 100% sure. Was that 18 Petway, 603 Rudolph, 916 Fatherland, 1409 Sumner, 1109 Basque Bell, 2815 Twenty-seventh Avenue South, and 3501 Byron?
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, and I guess the first one, is it 1100 Matthews?
I think we're going to start with 114 South Seventeenth Street, if that's okay with the commission.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'd like to say appreciate you people in the public for your patience and sticking around too, so thank you very much.
114 South Seventeenth Street is an application to demolish an existing structure and construct new infill in a detached carport. The project does require setback determination. 114 South Seventeenth Street is a one-story building constructed circa 1940. In the top photo, it's the house on the left. The building is situated in the rear of the lot of 1621 Holly Street. The house at 1621 Holly Street is used as a duplex, so there are currently three units on this lot. The codes department considers both a duplex in 1621 Holly Street and the residence at the back of the lot to be, quote, "non-conforming legal uses." As such, codes permits three residential units on the lot, or they're essentially grandfathered, as is in their current condition. Although the existing house at 114 South Seventeenth Street likely dates to the early 1940s, its style, form, and detailing do not match the historic context of the Lachlan Springs neighborhood. It has a low-slope roof and shallow eaves and is not a good example of this period of development. Staff there finds it's a demolition of the structure meets the design guidelines. Let's see. With the proposed new, so they're proposing to tear down the house to the right and to construct a new house and a carport. There will be approximately 27 feet between the two houses and nine feet between the proposed carport and 1621 Holly Street. The buildable area for the rear residential unit is set up by horizontal property regime, so in the site plan, the property line that's shown is, and I'm not sure if you can see it on your screen, it's kind of hard to see on the large screen here. So where it says property line, that seems to be the buildable area for the horizontal property regime between 1621 Holly Street and 114 South Seventeenth Street. It is our understanding, based on conversations with codes, that while three units is currently legal, if the existing house is to be demolished, the applicant will have to go back to the BZA before the demolition to ensure that a new third unit is permissible through the Here's an up-close view of the area of the site where the new infill is going to be constructed. The share of the lot for the new development is 60 feet wide and 62 feet deep. An alley runs along the north side of the property line. The proposed infill will be in the approximate location as the existing house that is to be demolished. However, will be shifted to the right of the site, closer to the alley, which will allow for more room between the house at 1621 Holly Street and the new development. The proposed infill is approximately 33 feet 7 inches wide and 33 feet deep. The house is significantly narrower and much smaller than the historic context, where houses range from about 35 to 38 feet wide and 44 to 65 feet deep. Comparing the two houses on the lot, 1621 Holly Street has a footprint of approximately 1,500 square feet, and the proposed new structure's footprint is about 1,007 square feet. So from our calculations, it seems like the footprint is about 2/3 the size of the primary or the structure that faces Holly Street. The infill will be approximately 27 feet from the front property line, which is about 6 feet forward of the house across the alley at 1112 South Seventeenth Street. The front wall of the new construction, however, will be 4 feet behind the Seventeenth Street facade of the house at 1621 Holly Street. Staff finds a front setback to be appropriate because of the shallowness of the lot and because it's behind the, it's 4 feet behind the sidewall for 1621 Holly Street. For the rear and the side setbacks, or what would be the rear and the side setbacks, it's going to be 5 feet from the alley and 5 feet from the west property line that divides 1621 Holly Street and 1619 Holly Street. Staff finds these setbacks to be appropriate because they shift the house away from the 1621 Holly Street house towards the alley and because the shallowness of the buildable lot makes locating the structure further away from the west property line impractical. In addition, the existing structure is situated less than 20 feet. Yeah, I think actually that's, nevermind, move on to the next point. The proposal includes a one-story, one-bay carport located to the left of the house. The carport meets all base zoning setbacks. There will be 5 feet in between the carport and the wall of the infill, and I think it was about 7 feet between the carport and the back wall of 1621 Holly Street. The carport will be 12 feet 10 inches wide and approximately 18 feet 4 inches deep. And here are the elevations. The proposed infill will be 1 and 1/2 stories tall, with a ridge height of approximately 23 feet 6 inches above grade. Staff finds that the proposed height matches the historic context. The house at 1621 Holly Street is approximately 25 feet tall, so it's about 18 inches taller than the proposed house. And the other houses along Seventeenth Street seem to range in height from about 21 feet to 26 feet, so this house falls within those range on the other houses at face Seventeenth Street. The house is oriented to face Seventeenth Street, which is appropriate. It does not have a front porch, but rather has a covered stoop that is approximately 2 feet 10 inches deep. The stoop is located near the front center corner of, the front left corner of the house. While the majority of contributing houses in Lachlan Springs do have porches, stoop entries are found on smaller houses like this one. All known materials have been approved by the commission in the past, and as always, the staff likes to approve the final material choices. The proposed carport will have a ridge height of 14 feet 6 inches and will be significantly shorter than the proposed infill in the house at 1621 Holly Street. Here are the side and the rear facades. It has a gabled roof with a slope of 712. The primary windows meet the design guidelines in terms of their proportion and placement. And here are some context photos. So the two photos at the top are 1621 Holly Street, so the one on the left is the Holly Street facade, and the one on the right is the Seventeenth Street facade. Then below that are the house, is the house across the street, and then other houses along Seventeenth Street. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Staff approves all final material choices. The finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic homes. And the HVAC unit location be approved by MHCC staff. With these conditions, staff recommends approval.
Thanks, Melissa. Any questions for staff?
I have a question about process.
Sure.
You mentioned in your presentation that even if we approved something today, we'd have to go back to the BZA. I wonder if that's a step that needs to occur before we even look at this. If you compare it to a rezoning or an SP, it's not like someone could bring in a site plan to you and say, "I haven't started my SP process, but I'd like Historic to sign off on it first." That's kind of what this is. I wonder if we should, if the application is now incomplete, given that we have information that they necessarily have a legal right to do what they're proposing. I wonder if we're out of order in process.
Right. Based on our conversations today with the codes department, he says that they still need to go to the BZA. The applicants can talk to what process they think that they've already gone through. Prior to today, we actually were in the understanding that this was, had already gone through that process, and it came to our attention today that it had not, based on our conversation with codes today. So that's something that does still need to be worked out.
Counsel, can our decision be contingent upon that?
You could do that. You could structure your decision in such a way that it's conditional approval based on the BZA and whatever they decide. But again, there is an argument to be made that this is putting the cart before the horse because we don't know if they're going to be allowed to even put the structure there. So really, there's arguments on both sides.
I certainly don't want to imply permission that if somehow a BZA appearance is not determined to be necessary, I don't want to doubt anyways.
Yeah.
I'd rather know that beforehand than that.
Right, that would be probably the best possible position for this commission to be in, is for the persons, the applicants, to already have the legal authority to build the structure on the property prior to your review, as the BZA may have some conditions, I don't know. And you would have the benefit of knowing what, if any, conditions they may have. So, you know, again, you could make your approval or your recommendation conditional, but the best possible position for you to be in is for the BZA to have already ruled.
Well, with that in mind, I mean, to me, use comes before design. Otherwise, like you're describing, we could have BZA conditions that are incongruent with what we decide here today, and then it's, I don't know what happens after that other than confusion. So with that in mind, I don't know whether you need a motion to do this or.
Well, if not acting, if BZA doesn't hear it before 30 days, are we, where would we fall in that?
Well, the discussion that I heard earlier was that this was information that you needed in order to review, and that the application was incomplete. I think your motion would have to reflect that, that you don't consider this a complete application, if you chose to go that route.
Anybody have thoughts on that?
So we could go the route of, basically, kind of what Erin, what you're saying, is that we say that it's incomplete, you know, it's incomplete, or kind of what Ben first spat out, that about, on the condition that this gets approved by BZA. Those are kind of our two things we could look at.
If I could, I'd like to make a recommendation or add something to that. And that's what counsel and I spoke about earlier today. The information keeps changing throughout the day, and I think you might want to hear from the applicant because they believe they have gone through the process. So maybe after they explain what they did, it will help make this decision as to whether or not to move forward with it.
Okay. That sounds, that's great. With that.
Well, can I just, can I just say, though, that, I mean, there's, is there any chance that we're in a position where, I mean, we don't really make those determinations? I mean, there's policy, and there's procedure, and there's, you know, around how and when these things occur, and if, so I just want to make sure that we're not put in a position where we're having to make a determination on procedure that we're not qualified to do necessarily.
And I'm not suggesting that you make a decision about procedure, but it may be, what they say may help you decide whether you want to approve it conditionally or whether you want to wait altogether.
I guess we could also always hear it, make it conditional upon BZA approval and conditional upon the BZA not imposing any other conditions, so that we would have an opportunity to rehear it if something came out of that that we can't predict. Does that sound like a safe course?
You could do that as well.
Why don't we just, we'll just play it out, and then we'll see what we feel like after we hear from the applicant. Okay, thanks, Melissa. With that, with the applicant, please come forward and state the case.
Oh. Our understanding, and we have a lot of emails that she's finding, back and forth with her attorney, I'm Peggy Newman, that's Rebecca Devang, in that everything was approved. What I've seen in the emails was that everything was approved. Someone picked up the documents. She didn't, I didn't, but we don't know, they did email us and say the documents were ready. So we're just not sure who actually went and picked up the documents. So she's looking to see if they sent her a copy.
What documents?
Of the approval.
I do have a copy of the horizontal property regime, but my understanding from speaking with codes was that that made the existing use, gave it a legal framework, but changing, demolishing the new structure, demolishing the rear structure and building a new structure would require you to go back to the BZA.
Is another step.
Is another step. That was my understanding from the conversations.
And what's your attorney? Did he say?
I do have a copy of the horizontal property regime, though, if anybody would want to see that.
Is there another step that you know of?
I don't think there is.
Were you at, has it been to the BZA? Yes, it has been to the BZA already.
The letter we have from Joey Hargus, the zoning examination chief, says that, based on the last information available in our office, the above referenced property is currently zoned R6. The dwelling fronting Holly Street is legally non-conforming to family. The single-family residence located behind is legally non-conforming as a second dwelling. Prior to the demolition of the rear dwelling, the Board of Zoning Appeals must approve the reconstruction of the new residence. Do you have anything since March 21st, 2014, from them?
I think she does.
I don't, I don't think we're going to figure this out definitively, and I don't want to be in a position where we deny it based on something that turns out to be incorrect, and you didn't need to go back to the BZA, and now the disapproval is just patently wrong. So I think we just talk about it. It's the safest thing to do.
Unless they would be willing to defer.
Yeah, unless you want to defer till we figure out the legal issue.
Request to defer.
You do.
Do you want me to request to defer? Does that mean another 30 days?
Yes.
Or are y'all, pardon me? Or do you do what you were saying with the condition?
It sounds, well, it sounds like that can't be done. We had thought that you'd gone through the process, but now we realize it's probable that you haven't been through that process. So just staff's recommendation to you would be to request a deferral and bring it back next month.
All right.
Because it sounds like they won't be able to approve it.
Okay. Then we request a deferral.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. So 114 South Seventeenth Street will be deferred until next month. Okay, 1100 Matthews Place.
1100 Matthews is an application to demolish a non-contributing structure at the corner of Matthews Place and Sharp Avenue and to construct a duplex infill and detached garage. The proposed infill and proposed garage meet all base zoning setbacks. The front wall of the infill will be 43 feet from the front property line, which meets the context of the side of Matthews Place. The site does not have alley access. The garage will be accessed via new curb cut off of Sharp Avenue at the rear of the property. There is an existing curb cut off of Sharp in the middle of the property, and staff finds that the relocated curb cut at the rear is in a more appropriate location, and on this block of Sharp Avenue, there are several curb cuts already, so it's consistent with that street scape. The infill will be 1 and 1/2 stories. It will have an eve height of approximately 10 feet and a ridge height of approximately 28 feet above grade. Most of the surrounding structures on Matthews Place and Sharp Avenue are non-contributing, so staff compare the height of the proposed infill to the historic houses on nearby streets. Staff finds the proposed infill's height does meet the historic context of the area, where houses are predominantly 1 and 1/2 stories tall, with some scattered two-story structures. The house will be 45 feet 3 inches wide, which staff finds does meet the historic context. The duplex is oriented so both units face Matthews Place, which is appropriate. There will be two identical 8-feet front porches of equal prominence, which is a form that is seen historically for duplexes. The large central dormer is set back 2 feet from the wall below, but staff asks that it be placed a minimum of 6 inches off the ridge. that it be placed a minimum of six inches off the ridge. The applicant, who I don't believe is here, has agreed to that condition. Note that the staff recommendation mentions an awning connecting the two porches and recommends that it be removed. That was staff misreading the drawings. The area that's kind of in the box, which we, an earlier version had been an awning, is actually the roof that you see because the dormer is set back. So you can ignore or disregard item number five on the list of conditions. All the materials have been approved in the past, with the exception that the cement fiber board siding, which is marked as being, having an eight-inch reveal, should be a five-inch reveal, and staff asks to approve all final material choices. Here are the side elevations. The infill's primary roof form will be a side gable with a slope of 712. Its window proportions and placements meet the design guidelines. The Sharp Avenue facade has a recessed side entry. With a simple overhang and no porch element, staff finds that the side entry clearly reads as a secondary entrance and is therefore appropriate. And here is the garage. It's a one-story, two-bay garage. It will be 32 feet by 20 feet, eight inches, or about 663 square feet. The garage will have an eve height of approximately nine feet and a ridge height of approximately 16 feet. Staff finds that it meets the design guidelines. Here are some context photos along Matthews Place and Sharp Avenue where there's really not any historic context. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. The finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor height of the adjacent structures. The lot siding be smooth-faced and have a maximum reveal of five inches. Staff approve all final materials. The front dormer be set a minimum of six inches off the ridge. And pathways leading from Matthews to the front entries be added. And finally, staff approve the HVAC locations. And I think I mentioned this earlier, but we've been working very closely with the applicant, and he is agreeable to all of those conditions. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Melissa?
No, everything that you see is, we've determined to be non-contributing.
Okay, thanks, Melissa. Is the applicant here? I'd like to come forward. No, you already said, no, that's right.
Right, yeah. But I believe there's someone from the public here.
Would anyone like to speak regarding this project?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Brett Withers. I live at 1113 Granada Avenue. I happen to be the neighborhood president of the Eastwood Neighborhood. Actually, as y'all have noted, the structures at Sharp and Matthews are outside of our historic date, so there is not a lot of historic context there per se. The one request that we had that we would like the Commissioners to entertain is a really minor detail, I believe, but what the matter is, is that for the, the rear portion of the building has a fairly lengthy expanse with no window opening, and the design guidelines in the italicized portion say that, pardon me, for in most cases, every eight to 13 horizontal feet, a flat wall surface should have an opening of a window over door. And the, if I'm reading the designs accurately, the sort of recessed portion in the porch is 16 feet long, and then it's a fairly good length until you get to the next window. And really, that is our only question is because that will be, that will have so much of a facade facing Sharp Avenue, which is already a kind of a narrow street, would the Commissioners entertain a condition to request some sort of a small window opening, either closer to the back of the main portion of the building or on the recessed portion that's inside the porch, again, just to provide a little bit more openness toward the street? And that's our only request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Closed public hearing. Discussion.
I have approval based on staff recommendations, deleting number five and adding the comments that were just made by the public.
Okay. Which was adding the window.
Adding the openings.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, we have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, is this 2002, 2002 and a half, Eastland Avenue?
If I can get this to go longer than nine minutes, I'll win the over/under. So take your time on this. Paul? All right, 2002, Eastland Avenue. And this is an application to demolish a non-contributing building and to construct two new detached buildings. The building shown here was built in 1999, and it actually straddles a property line between two lots. Two lots, actually, with separate deeds. Each is 30 feet wide. And because they're separate lots, no subdivision is required. And since the house is non-contributing, it meets the design guidelines for demolition. Subsequent to demolition, the applicant proposes to construct a new building on each of the separate lots. The new buildings will be one and a half story with office on the first story and a dwelling above, which is permitted under the MUN, Mixed Use Neighborhood zoning. Excuse me. In reviewing this proposal, staff found that it generally meets the design guidelines for height, scale, roof form, materials, orientation, and with the condition that the windows on the first story are vertically oriented, staff found it would meet the design guidelines pertaining to that portion as well, rhythm and proportion of windows. It does meet the setbacks for the MUN base zoning, and no reduction or variance is required. Regarding the Eastwood design guidelines for setback and rhythm of spacing, staff found that the buildings are going to be narrower than is typical of historic houses on the block, but because the lots are narrow, the rhythm of spacing between buildings themselves would actually be compatible with the historic context. So given the narrowness of the lots, staff found that the proposal meets that guideline as well, setbacks in rhythm of spacing. Staff recommends approval of the project with conditions that the finished floor height be consistent with the floor heights of adjacent historic houses, that the staff approve roof colors and final details of materials, windows, doors, prior to their purchase and installation. Staff approve the materials of the porch floor and front steps, that the proportions of side windows are more in keeping with the residential form, vertically oriented, and, actually, this is an important one, but I've gone into more detail in your site plan, that there shall not be a front yard parking area. As you see, the proposal showed a pull-in ADA parking area at the front of the lot right off of Eastland Avenue. Staff found this was not appropriate. Meeting those conditions, staff finds that the project meets the guidelines for the district and recommends approval. And I believe you did receive some public comment on this one as well.
Okay, thanks, Sean. I guess first, do we have any questions for Sean or staff? Sorry, jumped ahead. Okay, very good. Is the applicant here? Like to come forward? Okay. Seeing none, open public hearing. I'd like to speak about this, Brett.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. My name is Brett Withers. I live at 1113 Granada Avenue. I am the president of the Eastwood Neighborhood Organization. You should have already in your packets a letter from Michael Krailing, who is the president of the Rediscover East Group as well. I won't reiterate all of his objections, but to summarize, his objection is that this building proposes to put two quite narrow structures on two lots siding with some side setback determinations. Siding is a hardship, the narrowness of lots. The issue that our neighborhood has is that the, that condition is of the applicant's own making. The applicant made a decision in July of this year to seek to reestablish the original lot lines and filed, and the lots were subdivided. So that lots subdivision request is a setback determination for a hardship that was created by the applicant. I would ask you to take that into strong consideration for our next comments, which are that, again, the structures are narrower than the historic context. The design guidelines say that the rhythm of buildings should not contrast greatly with the neighbors, but with these structures being 22 feet wide, even the staff analysis says that surrounding houses are general between six and 10 feet wider. When you're looking at a building that's only 22 feet wide, six to 10 feet, being six to 10 feet narrower than the neighbors is significant, I would submit to you. Also, the height of the structures maxes out the historic range, and yet, for the narrowness, they want to get a variance so that they can be quite a bit narrower than any historic house in that vicinity. So we feel that the rhythm of this house and the dimensions of these two houses, rather, actually do violate the historic context, and we do not see why the commission should grant such a variance under the circumstances that have been created by the applicant. I would also like to point out to the Commissioners that Eastland Avenue itself features, is dominated by really large homes, some of the largest homes in Lakeland Springs and Eastwood Neighborhood line, Eastland Avenue, often with quite, quite large setbacks, but that's where our largest and widest homes are. Eastland Avenue is very similar to Belmont Boulevard of East Nashville, and what we believe the applicant certainly has a right to do two units here, but we believe that this application should be rejected and that a new request should be brought that accommodates two units, just as all of the other duplexes that we do in our historic districts that look like one building, and that one wider building actually would be appropriate. If anything, the applicant should be coming forward, given that context on Eastland, and requesting a little bit more width than would ordinarily be allowed. At that particular site, with that much visibility in this neighborhood, certainly has a right to the two units. We just feel that it needs to be a fully connected building that is centered on the lots in a way that does maintain the rhythm and that better matches that historic context. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Any others? Okay, closed public hearing. No, applicant's not here. Okay, discussion?
I think, similar to what Brett was saying, to me, this one, while it doesn't affect the analysis, is a lost opportunity to do something much, much better if they hadn't subdivided the property, and that creates a whole host of issues. I come back to 2B1, subsection B. Usually, when we talk about scale, we're talking about something being too big. I think in this instance, we're actually talking about something that is so thin, it's awkward. I don't know that you could get much skinnier than 22 feet when everything else, you can see from the aerial, is 35 feet. I think that is, that remarkable difference contrasts greatly. And then in subsection C, the setback in rhythm of spacing, I do think it's good that they've tried to stagger them so that the open space between structures is relatively consistent, but when you read the guideline, it says a dominant rhythm is established by uniform lot and building width. They're nowhere close on the building width, so for me, that also contrasts greatly. So I think there's two main issues there. I don't know that it's relevant to the analysis that the condition in which they're seeking a variance was their own doing. It may just be, from a legal perspective, Robin, that it is what it is at this point. Doesn't matter that they, they have the right to subdivide it, so we just have to deal with it.
Great, and I do want to, because these words matter, I do want to clear this up. You're not granting a variance. You don't have that capability. This is not a setback determination because it does meet bulk standards because of the way it's zoned. So, and yes, there are two lots there, and we have no authority to make them build one building straddling two lots.
Right. No, I know, I know we can't make them do that. It's a good point about the MUNA zoning. It's zero setback, so we're just looking at the rhythm. But it's still interesting that they're a foot and a half off and three feet off the neighboring property setbacks, but enjoying 12 feet between their structures, that is odd, too.
I'm looking at the overhead that's on the screen now and, you know, seeing the old Sesame Street song, "One of these things is not like the other." Or maybe it was that electric company, I can't remember which. It's pretty obvious that one structure on that site with the setbacks is very much contrasting greatly, and I think, Erin, respectfully, because of the original subdivision, these were narrow lots, that, you know, the gap, mass gap, certainly the mass isn't as big, but it's dictated by the lot. And because, if you put MUN aside for a moment, I know we can't do that, but if you put MUN aside for a moment and you were to do two shotgun houses because these are narrow lots, which you would be forced to do in a single-family situation, I'm not sure you would drive down the street and that anything that we're saying would have a lot of, would have a lot of weight if it were, potentially were a historic example of a shotgun house or a deeper house on a narrow, what amounts to a narrower lot. So that doesn't bother me as much, and to an extent, I'm seeing it the way that staff has, whereas you've got mass gap, mass gap, you know, that the space between is more consistent than the mass to, you know, comparative masses or, it's really not comparative, it's comparative mass, but more so, to the point, comparative frontage is drastically different. Unless this were subdivided, you know, recently, and I don't mean re-subdivided, I mean originally subdivided, I feel like this is the original lot layout and that these are...
It is, I think.
Yeah, these are narrower than the others are, and so it accommodates a different form and a different layout of, historically, of structure. And, you know, you see, I'm thinking of less homogeneous districts, not necessarily Eastwood, but less homogeneous districts. You do see that different house typology based on, you know, this kind of was a weird carving up of the block. So I don't, I don't see that as problematic, I think, as, as we've heard maybe some of the neighborhoods, neighbors do, and as you pointed out, again, it's not to say it's right or wrong.
You're all right with the width-to-height ratio. I'm not sure that there's a golden ratio, but I don't think, I can't think of examples of that historically anywhere in this. Robin, are there 22, 25-foot wide historic homes in the neighborhood? There might be, I just can't think of any.
I'm sure there are in the neighborhood somewhere. I mean, Mr. Withers has a point that most of the homes on Eastland are much larger, but then as you get down to this block, they do get a little bit smaller.
Yeah, that's true.
Clearly, it's still going to be narrower than what's on that block.
Substantially narrower.
Erin, for the sake of discussion, I think by dictating out of the district the opportunity for everything not to be homogeneous, especially when it's smaller, it's not going in the opposite direction, so it's, you know, so much larger than the other. I just can think of other, other examples in other districts, and I'm not as familiar with Eastwood, so I couldn't point to something in particular in this district, but that opportunity for the anomaly to occur, that it does fit into the fabric. I'm not as concerned about making it so that that couldn't, couldn't happen, particularly given the things that are present in this case.
I hear what you're saying, but it's smaller in the sense that it's less wide, but it is not at all smaller in the sense of height. So to put those in combination, you're at one end of the spectrum on width and the other end of the spectrum on height, and I think that combination is what contrasts. Yeah, that, if that, if each of them were able to be 32 feet wide and 32 feet tall, that's probably fine. If they would go 22 feet wide and 24, 26 feet tall, I think I could get there on that, too. But it's the, the whole notion of very narrow width, unusually narrow width, probably even extremely narrow, and then maxing out the height for the context, that's just really odd and incompatible in my eyes. Especially when you've got an opportunity, given that it's Eastland, it's, again, not relevant to the analysis, but it's disappointing to me editorially that they didn't go... didn't go and bring a four-square that matches a lot of what is on Eastland. There's, it's not about the size, it's about two different structures looking so odd together to me when, I think they could have gotten the same place with something maybe even bigger.
And I don't know that we could require them to do this, but there's no reason why they couldn't do a zero lot line, essentially a townhouse, zero lot line, two-unit building that straddles the property line. So it is possible to create that form you're talking about with, with the property lines as is, because they have zero side setbacks, right?
Yeah. I wish the applicant was here.
Do a firewall, duplex.
I wish the applicant was here to talk about it, because it seems they could end up with more square footage and it would look a lot better.
Speaking editorially, I like the backs, but I don't like the fronts, but then whether they need to do a guy.
I don't like sides.
Well, with all those, with all those lights, do we, you have a question?
I have a question that's not really pertaining to the issue at hand, I don't think, but this, the site plan shows head and parking off of Eastland. I think I understood that, is it one of the, yeah, no, yeah, one of the conditions removes that of the staff recommendation?
He's also submitted a new site plan, because Public Works wouldn't approve that either.
Okay. I noticed in this neighborhood, a couple of blocks away, they're flooring front side, front parking pads in front of new homes, and I, I just, it raises a question of, should we be adding that as one of our standard conditions regardless? And if we don't put it in as a condition, does it leave it open? Sorry, that's probably a conversation for outside of this case, but, so we'll, we'll have that later.
Robin, there's some windows on the side elevations that are pretty unusual. Can you talk about those?
Staff was looking at those as somewhat of a modern interpretation of the picture window you see on some later historic homes, where there's a, a large central window in the middle, and then there's two side light windows on either side. And, so we were recommending, I believe, that the front window, let me double check and make sure, that the front window and the, immediately on the sides have a little bit more of a traditional proportion, but then the others back from that, because they would be less visible, were not as important.
Was there a lot of work with the applicant on this?
This is pretty much what he came in with originally.
Man, I don't know. I think it's close, but I'm kind of with Aaron, I just think it's just not quite there, maybe, just the proportions just seem a little out of place. And I don't particularly mind the narrowness if it was done a little bit better, maybe drop the height as Aaron suggested.
Do we have a motion?
Based on, based on comments, I'm not sure how someone's going to cobble together for, I'll take a shot at it, I guess.
Find part of the guidelines that you're more.
Motion to disapprove based on being, based on 2B1 subsection B, that the size of the building is, is incompatible and contrasts greatly with surrounding historic homes, specifically with respect to width and the ratio of width to height, as well as section 2B1 subsection C, that it doesn't meet the established rhythm and spacing, given that the, the rhythm is not only established by the space between buildings, but the building widths themselves.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I find myself with Ben on this one, actually, so.
Whoa.
So motion does not carry.
How did you see that coming?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, wait a minute. That means we don't have a affirmative.
Yeah, it means it's got to go again.
Yeah, yeah, so, motion does not carry. What, how do we do this, then?
You need a new motion.
Discuss some more and figure it out.
Somebody's got to make another motion. Yeah, somebody's got to do a new motion.
The, on, on the height issue, what, can, staff, can you help maybe fill in some blanks about what are adjacent heights, total heights?
I, ish. I left that information back at the office, but if I recall, within, it would be within the range of, certainly since they're all one, one-story, one-and-a-half-story, 20 to 28 feet for the historic.
28 feet being kind of the, the higher end of that, certainly. Okay.
And here we're at 33.
And we're at 33 with the receiving, I guess, down with the, taking into account what, you know, whatever, whatever height the porch rack or the porch floor is above the, above grade. And I think in that, so, in that roof shape, I may just need some more convincing here. I mean, in that roof shape, that, that height, you said it, that height to width ratio is different, so different from, from these others. I'm looking at it, and I'm thinking, that height occurs, as dimension on the plans, you're 20, 20 feet. If, if the roof didn't kind of wag back like that, that would, that would be a form that's not a typical of, of things we've approved and, and houses that are nearby. It's not so much that I'm advocating, I just, as an applicant, and, and we, we, I think we've approved similar, is what I'm struggling with, to send this applicant draw, going back to the drawing board in terms of, in terms of just the overall massing and scale of it.
Well, I, the thing I didn't understand is, if they have MUNA zoning, they have no setback restrictions whatsoever, we're the only ones that are going to put any setback restrictions on them, why is it still so skinny?
Because that's what makes it so incompatible.
It looks like he wants a courtyard.
Yeah, it's driven by, by a courtyard, and the courtyard itself is incompatible with the rhythm and spacing of the houses anywhere in that neighborhood, let alone this street. I think the sort of tail's wagging the dog, or however you say that. It's just, there's, I just think it's just wrong.
I don't think that, I wish the applicant was here to explain it, but I don't believe that's a courtyard. When we spoke, it was more about keeping that rhythm, the, the space between buildings that you see historically.
It's labeled as.
Was really, I think, more of his thinking. That if you didn't look at the lot lines, you know, if you took the lot lines out of the equation, that these, he felt the widths were more compatible with the historic context.
I think I would rather give up width and spacing than, if I'm trying to make a rhythm consistent, I would rather give up width and spacing between structures than be stuck with extremely narrow structures. I mean, I think, because there's two parts to that equation.
And since I voted, I mean, though, I guess I could go with, if they were a little wider and we reduce the setback between the two. I mean, just in principle, because it's, the lots are, they're like this now, I, I mean, that's why I see, it's going to be what it is now, but maybe that, that would be my concession. And if they, they go ahead and lease, if we reduce that 12-foot, or I guess it's six feet from the property line, so that they could, and we would say that make it a little wider, that would be my, I guess, my concession. I just, I felt like, because there's, like what Robin said, the lots are already subdivided now, I mean, I would prefer they hadn't subdivided, but that's, we can't talk about that.
What about something like, if you increase the width by three feet and reduce the height by four, I think you're getting back into something that's a lot more compatible, because nothing on this block is, is bigger than 28 feet. So that would get them down to 29 on the height, and they get the width up to at least 25. It's still going to be tall and skinny, but it's getting closer.
Yeah.
I don't even know if I like that. I probably wouldn't like that.
This is what I don't like, is we're sitting trying to redesign somebody's project. I mean, that's not our job. I mean, either we vote for it or we don't. I mean, just get on with it. So we've already had a vote, so somebody make another motion, and let's get on with it. I mean, I don't want to second-guess how the guy's going to use the space for designing this building. I mean, it's just.
Personally, that's a good point.
That is, that's a good point. Okay. You, anyone else? Ben, you want to take another shot at a motion?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I'll, I'll take a shot at it.
Okay.
All right. I propose, I'll move that we approve staff recommendation with all their conditions and the condition that the height is reduced by three feet, which would essentially bring, or, yeah, bring it, bring it down to the top of the gable, which will help with the vertical proportions that were mentioned in the previous discussion. Motion.
Okay.
That's my motion.
That's your motion, okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion, second. Any discussion?
What happens if nothing gets voted on, approved?
Well, let's go. We're, we're headed there. We'll see what happens. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Ben again.
If nothing happens, it'll get, if nothing happens, it'll get approved by operation of law within 30 days.
As is.
As is.
With conditions for?
As is.
As is.
No conditions.
That's, that's an incentive.
I think we can, we can motion all night long.
But if two people walk out, the meeting's over as well.
What if it comes, what if it comes to fisticuffs? What happens then? So we have to prove something.
Well, I mean, I suppose we, we could go back to the original motion and have another vote, knowing that the applicant would likely be bringing something back to us, and we'd have an opportunity to see it again.
That's good. That's the point.
Just got a disapproval tonight, likely means we'll see it next month.
He can bring it back, right?
I will, I'll try this one more time. Motion to disapprove based on the section 2B1 subsection B, that the, the size and scale are not compatible due to the width and the width to height ratio, the width being unusually narrow, and the height to width ratio being incompatible with surrounding historic buildings. And section 2B1 subsection C, that the established rhythm and spacing of, of the block is, this project is incompatible with that, and that the building widths are unusually narrow.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have two seconds. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion to disapprove carries. Is there any other business, Robin? Any other business? Okay, all right, meeting adjourned.